You have some, um.
No, few. Yes.
Thank you.
Not hearing.
You cannot hear us, we can hear.
Oh, now I can, now I can. Thank you. And the other question I had is, is the planning board gonna be discussing the storage sheds along Manchester Road? Cause I didn't see that on the agenda unless I missed it.
It is, that is the all purpose storage. So that's the first item we'll be discussing.
Okay, must have an old, sorry, must have an old planning board meeting that popped up, my apologies.
Not a problem. So with that, we'll proceed to all business and uh tonight we are um hosting a public hearing for this uh development. And um with that, I open the door for discussion. At that.
So one thing I just wanted to raise at the beginning is, as you all know from the email traffic, I missed the last meeting. Um but when I asked, you know, whether people wanted me to recuse myself because of that or or not, so I could participate and vote according to MMA guidelines. I got the impression that people appreciate having me participate and vote. So just so I can certify to the applicant and on the public record, I've reviewed the um minutes of the meet, last of the June first meeting, I've reviewed the um the YouTube recording of the meeting and the, and the hour and seven minutes of, of discussion of whether the app, the application was complete. Um and I've reviewed the submissions made for the June first meeting and for this meeting. And so unless, you know, the board has an objection, I would plan to participate fully, including vote.
As I mentioned at the last meeting, one of the things I tried to do at the last meeting was not get in for a whole lot of detail of the application, but making sure, just looking at for completeness rather than discussing it in detail and the fact that George listened to that okay uh has read the application thoroughly, I don't see why he couldn't participate and vote.
That's exactly why, that's exactly why we did that is so everybody could participate, uh cause we didn't discuss the application.
Yeah.
And um we just went through completeness part of it.
Well, I was just concerned because the MMA planning board guidelines, you know, um requires if somebody misses a meeting to make a statement, in some cases, sometimes require an affidavit on that you're adequately prepared to knowledgeably participate in the meeting. On a, on you want a particular application?
I myself went through the whole thing, but um I, if we have three people, they can vote on this. I will, I will prefer not to be mobbed with it tonight. All right, that said, um anybody else have, um more comments from the board?
I have a question. Technically or whatever, not technically, I am a ultimate planning board. We have six people tonight. And the question is, am I, and maybe because there aren't six people gonna be voting on this thing, that I'm, I'm it for this thing, but I just wanna make sure that we knew there's six people and if other people are all gonna be active members, we're active members, I don't know where we're at.
Yeah, and that furthers complicated by the fact that Rich chaired the last meeting and probably would be most appropriate for him to chair portion of completing the, the completion checklist. Have you, have you had a chance to review the minutes and the, and the?
No, I haven't, I just came here again just to uh sit here and and get the speed again, I think you could have a form there.
Okay, pretty good.
So he could essentially refuse himself from this application, which bring it down to five again.
Right, yeah.
So um so with that, then we, I, so that's uh Peter's refused and I refuse myself too into it. So we're gonna have three people voting there. Alright.
Yep.
And then sorry, four. Alright, so I guess that's established a form for the night. And with that, I opened the floor for comments from the public. So Dow.
Okay.
Okay, um Mrs. Carr.
I, well, I, I guess I was kinda hoping to hear a little bit more about this project. Um I haven't seen any plans, the only thing I saw was this, the letter from the CEO saying that they're gonna um put, you know, double, over double the number of, of um storage units and, and on this parcel, which I, I real, I would love to have some more information um as in a butter to understand the thought process behind this and, and, and to understand where that this, you know, where this is proposed and the impact, you know, have there been, you know, studies as to see about the impact on the traffic? You know, this is not a, 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 a major highway, this is, you know, this is a tertiary road and, and that impact of uh is, has a potential. So I'm kinda wondering what, what the due diligence has been to to the area and, and what, what the planning board has asked of this applicant. Um I, so, so I really, I've come to just to hear first um and to find out what's going on because I had absolutely no idea until the CEO sent a letter and I only received the letter two days ago and I'm traveling, so I'd love to hear more about what's going on literally in my front yard and the impact if, you know, what, what impact has been done or what, what studies have been done to see about the impact by more than doubling the number of storage sheds. To see, to me, it seems a lot. So what, what is, what has the planning board been, you know, requested of the applicant? Uh is there a plot plan? Do we know where the buildings are? Do we know how many units are gonna be within, in that storage unit? I mean, there was a general size of what the units are, which, you know, it's I just, I just would love to hear some more information before making, you know, before commenting on anything because I, I don't know anything and I'd like to know more.
I was, I was um gonna make a suggestion that we complete the work that the board started last, at the last meeting and to determine whether, and voting on having a complete application to even review. Um and uh that's a necessary step required by the ordinance. At that point, then we can get into the substance and part of that could be that might help uh Bar and, and, and Mr. Dow possibly as well if they haven't had a chance to see the application online. The um, the uh, uh, we could ask the applicant to give a summary of, of the proposal. And, and then we can take it from there as we go through all the different elements of, of the application and whatever questions board members may have or issues that board members may have where you know, that we may feel that it um lacks, it doesn't quite come off the performance standards of the ordinance.
We did our program completions the last meeting, that's been taken care of with conditions.
We had some things that you had to get back to.
Yeah, right. Which, when I saw those.
What I, what I saw of the application was that they were, they were missing the copy of the main geological surveys that I'm gonna send them that, that travel map.
Yeah.
And that's present.
Travel map, they did submit that, but that part can be checked off as that done with a letter for the fire chief.
Right.
Yeah, and uh the main drinking water program map was submitted, which was a part of the last one. We asked for a copy of the lease agreement because there was some concern about what could be stored there and, and was concerned about, it wasn't dumpster, what, what can people bring into so many um concern about gasoline and stuff like that, they did submit that lease agreement. Uh and then the other uh well, it was more the, the issue of anyway, it was uh I, I informed the uh applicant that the uh buffer requirements that he should be looking at them uh that he had, they had included in their application, I think I have to go back and look, it's almost thirty. There was planting and vegetation on the, the edge of the uh property, but I'm not sure exactly where and I didn't think it met uh the actual requirements and the ordinance for buffering. Uh and the other one was uh the applicant did not have a now phosphorus control uh submission. Uh they wanted to go to, uh they wanted essentially to get a permit by, I'm not permit, permit from DEP. After they got our permit with a condition where we would condition that the permit would not be good until they uh got this permit from DEP for stormwater. Uh and if they did, then our requirement for the phosphorus control thing would be met by that stormwater permit. So those are things that we would not submit.
And the other thing, if I fell in that same category like DEP stormwater permit on whether or not they handle that as a condition of approval, um based on my review of the tape was the DOT entrance permit and the DOT traffic movement permit. Uh I, I guess reviewing the tape, I was confused, I didn't see a motion or anything of that nature that proved list when so many things were missing.
Yeah, well, we, we, we did, I remember the, we had enough to move forward. We didn't have a formal vote, but we said we had enough to move forward to the next meeting.
Yeah, right, uh which we have that I, I, and when I was talking about um completeness on vote, you know how we go after we've got the entire checklist completed, which at the moment we don't. Um the uh, then we vote on having a complete application and you as the acting chair need to sign that.
Okay, so uh we do have that issue of the uh entry permit or what I'm not sure, and George, you might be able to help me out on this uh the difference or the significance of the two. Uh one is a highway entrance permit, which I think we, we, when we met the other night, we kinda concluded they already had that. Fact is already in it, they're using the same entrance that is already there, so they're not, we're not approving a new entrance.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood, I got the impression that one was never submitted with the original application.
Oh, I believe that may be true because the actual entrance comes off of a right of way, which then connects to the highway.
I'm only basing that, I, I haven't had a chance to review the original application to the planning board back to that. I was basing it on your discussion.
I, I heard it's under the understanding that they had already had a permit.
Google Earth. And then you've got, show us the driveway.
Yeah, I mean Chuck's right here, I mean, we should ask him.
Okay. I don't, you were, this was a put online, you see that comes off already.
Right. Yeah, so they would have had to get an access permit onto one thirty-five from DOT back in two thousand and five, if they did. Fine, um but um uh it doesn't answer the question of whether or not they need a traffic movement permit because of the doubling of the size of the number of units and the increase in traffic. I, I don't know the answer to that question, but only DOT does, but but I guess I, I would suggest um asking Chuck to weigh in on.
We're asking Joe.
Oh, first off, good evening, everyone, um good to see you back and some new faces. Um under, in my, when I looked into the DOT permit, um a traffic movement permit would require any that would trigger at any time you have over a hundred trips um in a peak hour um from my understanding, which we are well below. You know, we're at fifty-eight in a day estimated and six per hour. So um it's my understanding, we don't need a traffic movement permit. Um as for driveway permit, you know, we're not changing anything with the access, so I didn't think we needed one if um turns out we do. Um this is another state permit, um should be very straightforward if it is needed, but um I don't think it will be. Um so we, if that is required, then we ask for conditional on that, uh conditional use, conditional um acceptance on that as well. But uh from my, my research, it doesn't look like we'll need one, but.
Chuck is not that. For the seal, uh is that because one was issued by DOT to the former owner back in two thousand and five?
Um yes, and they, they may require, like, um since we're changing the site, just an update the permit, you know, give them a set of the new plans, but I haven't seen anything that requires that at this time.
Okay, well, that helps.
So as I understand it and I, I agree with them, if it need, if it's a hundred trips or entries or whatever, this thing here is that, patient indicates it'd be like six an hour or close to it.
Yeah, I mean, I would have been surprised if that was required, typically that's required for uh retail, you know, with the uh proposed little handford and, and, and you know, things with high traffic volume.
Yeah.
Um this doesn't have very high traffic volume.
Okay, uh and so that and I don't see that as an issue, the other issue is if they, they do need an entry permit, they'll have to get that before as a condition to like that. If, if that's necessary.
Or amended.
Yeah.
It, it sounds like that's possibly more the case.
So.
Can I ask a question? I mean, who's determining these traffic volumes?
The applicant provided us with a, an app, a uh number based on some kind of manual.
Yeah.
The traffic type movement manual.
Yeah, it's a na, a national standardized manual used by traffic engineers across the country that the ordinance requires them to use and that's exactly what they base their estimates on.
But are they basing it on this, the, the size of the unit or the number of units that are there, or are they basing it on? I mean, because I guess my question is within these supposedly, and, and it's, it's more than doubling it, cause it's five now and now there's seven. So um it's, it's more than doubling and, you know, you don't, I, I don't know, I haven't seen how, you know, how each building, building is gonna be broken up into how many units? And so, you know, are there ten units per building or are there only five units per building? Which would then, I would assume, determine how many people come in and out if you have, you know, fifty units versus thirty units and, and fifty people rather than thirty people. So I, I guess, again, I'm not an engineer, I don't pretend to be one, but I just am trying to understand how these numbers are, are, are coming about when there's gonna be a substantial increase and, and again, I don't know what's inside the buildings and how these, how, like, how the numbers are determined, so me, to me, there seems like it could be a lot more traffic than six per hour, I mean, there's already I, I tend to think that there's already six per hour. So if you're gonna double it but, you know, that, maybe it's just, it's a seasonal thing, I don't know, but um there's a lot of, there's a lot of movement going on there, so I guess I would ask folks to be cognizant that a manual may not be applicable to all situations.
And I ask Dr. uh respond to uh the number, uh, uh, is this project set up uh such that you have an exact number of units uh being built or is it not even that developed?
Um so I, I don't know if this is a, if I'd like to answer all the questions at once or kinda do a presentation, but um it's the uh, traffic generated is based on square footage, um they give you an estimate on their past studies per thousand square feet of um storage buildings, so we take our proposed and the existing and it's based on that per thousand square feet, um that gives us the fifty-eight trips a day or six per hour. Um and we do not have a um, a building specific breakdown of the size and number of units in each one, I believe they're typically um ten feet wide and you're double sided, but sometimes it depends on um the need in the area. Uh but we do not have a specific breakdown at this time.
So Chuck, do I understand correctly, you don't know how many units you're proposing?
Yeah, not inside of each building. You know, it's typical standard ten feet wide and the buildings are a hundred and ten, so around uh twenty-two per side, but that's just a, an estimate.
I had a quick question, Chuck, so the, the rate that you mentioned to us of six trips per day per hour, interesting, six trips uh per hour. Did that encompassing the home, uh the existing buildings plus the new ones?
Yes, that, that's, that's a total, total site. And that's just, that's based on, you know, that manual, which it varies site to site. But that typically in the past, we've seen these have a very minimal traffic.
Question to the board.
Uh Doug, can I ask for clarification? I heard right of way is, is that a right of way over someone else's property? An illegally defined right of way with any restrictions or was that just terminology? Help with using parcels or?
And see the right of way. Thank you, we have a schematic. And we see this, this in gravel drive. So it is a shared right of way with the residents down here. The building has a dedicated entrance, which does come off of the shared.
That, that's the, essentially the driveway to Bill and Debbie Wadley's house. And the D in the application has uh it stated as illegal right of way.
For commercial purposes?
Yeah, for commercial purposes.
Okay, thank you.
That's the same setup as far as physical on the ground as it was when Bob Wadley built, yeah, own the facility. Always been that, that setup. Um question to the board. Do we need to know what's going in, uh in these uh buildings as far as space uh numbers of units?
Um. I, I, I think we should finish the completeness application, the, the list first and I think that's appropriately discussed when we get to the substance of the application, um short answer for me is I, I need to hear more discussion about how you can estimate the amount of traffic without knowing how many units you're leasing.
Yeah, alright, um so we're dealing with the highway entrance permit, which is um we really don't know for sure right now, um uh let's see. There is proposed screening, but I, I guess uh we're not here to talk about whether it's adequate or not, but there is a plan for, for screening. Um and there is no uh part of the application that, that addresses the phosphorus control uh enforcement of the ordinance and again, uh if we call it complete, it's gonna be complete with the condition uh essentially uh that material needs to be divided before the application can be booked. Will be conditioned for permanent approval. It's the best that we can do. So those are the, the, I guess the um there's two areas, uh the question with this point is the uh DOT entrance permit, not the entrance, but yeah, the entrance permit and uh these phosphorus control provision of the ordinance. Do we does the board think that we could uh prove, determine that the application is uh complete with the exception of those two items? I just I'm raising we've told the last three, the, the condition will We've told the last three of the, the condition will. Uh, phosphorus control. Highway. And I I don't know about it, I stopped doing that, we still said, we're gonna have to make sure that. We have bad answers, the the applicant provides that answer from to us from D O T before. We can approve the project.
I mean, we we just have the applicants. Stating on the record that a permit was issued in two thousand and five. The question is. Does D O T require it to be amended because of the expansion? And and the large amount of traffic. And so I would suggest that could be handled as a as a condition as well. Um. Uh, as you said, Rich, that if, you know, either provide documentation as a condition of approval that it's not required. Or if required, a copy of the permit.
Mm-hmm.
And and sort of, you know, for all intents and purposes at this point, then it would. Who could be viewed as complete for that checklist purpose.
Are we ready to vote on it? Um. Yes, uh.
You want a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Guess I'll make a motion to uh. Uh, pretty the application is adequately complete to move forward with the. Uh substantive review.
One second, that motion. Okay, awesome. We'll all tell a moment. Yes, man, yes. Peter.
Stand on, stand.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's right, George?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. I too, I wrote that it's completely. Um. To exceptions. Okay, uh. What's the name, whether we? Open it up to the applicant to try to explain to. Uh. The board or in the in the uh people in the audience. Uh, questions that they were asking. Uh, answer to the questions or uh whether we start with our own questions of the applicant. Uh, one or the other, I'm not sure which one needs to go first. Uh. It would be more helpful to the applicant of the uh. A butters if we ask the questions first. Uh.
Um, I I. It's six, one half than the other, but um since uh. Um, Carr has not had an opportunity to review the application apparently. Uh, and uh is not familiar with what's being proposed. Um. I think it might be more expedient, more efficient if if we asked Chuck to give a. A quick overview of the application. And on and in the process of doing so, maybe addressing the questions she's raised so far. Afterward, afterwards, I I think the appropriate order of questioning is the. Board members and then members of the public. Um, and uh, and that's that way, uh, a member of the public, whether it's Mr. Dow or or. Or Cara, it would uh would have the opportunity of hearing what the applicant said and what. Client board members said before they uh weigh in.
Okay, so Chuck, why don't you give us a summary and uh of what you're doing and keep in mind that. A lot of the summary is stuff that we know already, but the butters are hearing for the first time.
Okay, um, quick question first. Do you guys have like a TV? I'd like to, if possible, share my screen. Um, I have uh my plans, so you know, anyone who can watch it, you guys all can see from your seats or have a copy.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share this is not too good a zoom, but um, let's see. Can you all see that?
Next one.
Oh.
So the question where Mrs. Gark can see that?
I'm on my site layout plan, kind of gives you an overview. Um. And the existing condition, I'll start with the existing conditions. Alright, um, well, good evening, everyone. Um, Chair and all attendees. My name is Chuck Ritchie, um, with Fieldstone Land Consultants, uh, representing uh all purpose storage. Um, Belgrade. Um, we're proposing an expansion of um this existing self-storage site at six, six, six eighty-eight Manchester Road. Um, State Route one thirty-five. Um. It's currently developed with five uh storage buildings totaling just over sixteen thousand square feet. Um, we've got gravel access um all around the buildings, um except for that one there, the lower side. Um. And then, as you can see, all to the east, that's a open field. Um. Which slopes down towards the railroad. We are commercial use, so we uh designed the site for the commercial development review ord- ordinance. Um, and we didn't, I didn't find any need for waivers um for this application. Um. This site has pretty much reached um capacity for the existing storage buildings. Um, it's a. You know, a populars, popular use, people need storage, so we're looking to expand it. With uh seven additional buildings out back, um totaling twenty-three thousand one hundred square feet. Um. It's gonna operate much as it. Has in the past, um same owners. Uh, same, you know, lease agreement. Um, in terms of ser- terms of uh lease. Um. Some other features on the site uh that we have included. Um. I included uh lighting. It's really just for security. Um, it's gonna be. Ashed, shielded, and um no, there'll be no glare. It's just for, you know, safety in between buildings. Uh, we have but uh residential uses on each side, so. I had proposed this uh landscape screening. Um. We've got two, in a, in a two-layer kind of. Alternating style with. You know, trying to be um. As natural as we can because we don't have any existing wooded areas out here. And there's. Along the right of way, um, there's an existing. Uh, let me see. Twenty-two trees. On the right way that look like they've been planted recently. Um. For the previous development. Um, in terms of the design of the site, this is our grading, we're draining the whole thing down east to the low spot. Um, trying to maintain the natural contours of the site all into one infiltration basin. Um, infiltration will allow us to um. Infiltrate and treat and recharge the stormwater and other pollutants like phosphorus. So we don't anticipate having any issues um going before the state. Uh, meeting their regulations and therefore the town regulations. Um. This is a tier, like a terrorist system, terror terrorist site. Each kind of section of buildings is a few feet lower than the previous one. Um, and that's what we're proposing here as well. Um. This allows it to be, it won't be visible from the right of way when you're driving by. Any new buildings will be. Um, out of sight. And it also. Reduces the amount of material needed to be brought in or taken out, so you won't have. Excessive amounts of dump trucks coming in and out. Um, because we're balanced um with soils on the site. Some items that were brought up. That I like to kind of address from. Our preliminary meeting. Um. Hours of operation, it's in the lease agreement, but. They do, we're um hold the right to limit them, but they typically like to offer twenty-four seven. Um, service, you know, we propose a gate here. But if people would like to need their items in their storage. It's like, we'd ideally like to offer them at any time. Um, people intend to. They don't take advantage of that, I guess, I would say. Um. You know, they come at reasonable hours. Um. To uh access their units. Also, it was mentioned, there is a. Um, item in the lease agreement, there's gonna be no storage of, no fuel allowed. No gas, uh powered vehicles, no food, et cetera, no hazardous materials stored inside. And if they fail to pay rent, um typically. If uh they double lock it, so the owner of the site will put the lock over the existing lock and then. If there's no payment received in a week, I think it's typically standard, they um, I believe it's a auction of some sort, or they sell off items to. Um, kind of pay back that. Missing fees for the month. Um, overall, we feel the site is an ideal. Location for an uh expansion, it's already got the existing use. Um. There's no need for uh a new site to be developed further. Um, and. You know, it's an additional tax base to the town. And it uh provides people with um storage units that are obviously being filled up and. Uh, people are looking to rent. That's kind of all I've got, um, kind of an overview. Uh. I'll give it back to you, the Chair, and uh. Let you guys take it from here, thank you. Let me see if I can stop sharing.
I guess it uh will open up to the board to ask. Questions or provide comments on. What we have in front of us, uh. Questions to the applicant and uh comments uh regarding. The. Overdoing or concerning the thing. They matter in France. You don't really know what the, you know, impervious is compared to. Do we know the percentage of the impervious areas? And it looks like a lot of buildings going on there.
Um, well, in the application, uh. And correct me if I'm wrong, Chuck, you have that there's uh. Seventy-one thousand, six hundred fifteen square feet of impervious surface. And it's and a total of a hundred thirty-two, the other uh. Relevant uh measurement is a hundred two uh thousand uh. Square feet of disturbed area. Uh. The impervious surface is more than an acre, so that's why D D P's permit is triggered. Um.
Uh, you are, you you're correct. Um. Uh, proposed impervious is around seventy-one thousand, that includes all the new uh pavement and buildings. Um, how big is the site? You know, and that's on a six-point-seven acre site. Um, but you're you're correct with those numbers.
Very.
Doctor, this is George Seal on our. On the same subject, uh, have you already been in touch with D E P about their uh and submitted their permit? Or are you still in discussions with them over what's required or where where is that?
Uh, we've not, I haven't reached out to them yet. I've uh looked them up online to see, you know, what their standards were and to determine that we did in fact need the. Their. Um, their permit, but we haven't done extensive, I ran initial numbers for drainage. But, you know, we're looking to see if this is gonna get approved locally before we. You know, dive too deep in. Um. But that's the next, the next step would be to reach out, see what they need. Um, and go from there.
Thank you.
I have one question myself. Uh, it actually has to do with the 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 application. Uh. Well, I meant to ask this question before we voted and whatever on the application, but. It uh, it's more an issue not whether it's complete, but what the, whether the question is uh. Uh, correct, the answer is correct. Number fourteen on the application. Says is the property part of the food subdivision. Uh. And I question whether this was actually even a subdivision of uh. Was there more than one lot created when? Bills. Sold it to the new owner?
Um, I'm not entirely, I believe it was just this parcel, this portion taken off, if I understand correctly. Um, the deed is just from a year or two ago. Um, but we were, it was a sub, you know. It was subdivided off, so I included as, yes, it was part of subdivision.
I'm not sure it's illegal, it was a legal uh. But the great method, legal definition is something.
Yeah, I I I actually had the same question and question whether uh. Uh, a subdivision was even created back. You know, when, when um. Uh, this parcel was sold to your client, uh, since there's only creating two lots. Um.
In the end, I'm not sure it makes a difference how we deal with the application, which is.
No, as as long as. We're confident no subdivision was uh approval was required and. And or and or no subdivision approval was obtained and and there may be conditions of approval or other. Particulars that impact this, but I I don't believe that's the case. Uh, that either the case.
The the uh. Question I had too is uh. The area between the buildings and uh along the like roadway driveway. Are they all gonna be uh paved or is this gonna be gravel? Uh. Surfaces between the buildings and the area where the cars drive.
Um, all the new uh buildings are gonna be paved. Um. In between the buildings, we'd like to run like a trough for the stormwater so that it doesn't flow into the buildings. And that works much better um in terms of erosion, like we're reducing erosion of gravel when it's paved, so uh we'll we'll be paving all the new sections.
All right, okay.
I have two questions, Richard, if I may.
Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Dow.
Um, just clarification on, did I hear that the lease restrictions uh. Basically prohibit vehicles? Or did I? Understand?
Think it's stolen gasoline.
Uh, section nine, I saw that it's, but there is a special permit allowed if they did want to store vehicles, so et cetera.
We, I can only speak to my past experience with Bill Wadley. Was when my facility was full, I would refer people to him and vice versa. So that would include folks, automobiles, A P Vs, potential wire leads.
Chuck, with regard to that question, my interpretation of the lease agreement with uh clients uh. Uh, would only allow uh. Gasoline, other petroleum products. Uh, allowed uh if they're in the tank of the vehicle, is that correct? Like lawnmowers and. Outboards or whatever.
Uh, taking a look at just uh reading through this, um. Number nine, uh C gas-powered items. Um, no more than a quarter tank and you've got to have a drip pan um. Under it to catch any leaking fluids. Um, and then a vehicle storage. Uh, then dump must be completed um by the owner for any vehicle. Uh, let's see, uh, that would be. Page number. Page five, I think, or six. See gas-powered items, but um.
I mean, my concern is not so much with stored vehicles, my concern is somebody storing uh. Fifty-gallon containers of gasoline or. Or uh degreasers or solvents or something in there, particularly if it came from another commercial business.
Yeah, and I think that lease agreement is pretty clear.
Yeah, I agree.
There are many, I have a question.
Yeah, I I have a few. This is a good time, uh. The uh. Chuck, this is with regard to question thirty-six on the application regarding noise. Uh, and whether or not. Uh, it indicates that the noise standards will be met. Uh it indicates that the noise standards will be met, the uh um. But I I was wondering whether twenty four hour patron access was going to be allowed, the uh lease agreement is kind of. Unclear to me, at least on that point.
Um so I believe in there in the lease agreement, it does say that you reserve the right to uh limit hours of operation. You know, with the with the gate um or codes, um but typically they would be twenty four seven. As for that response, respect to the noise, um you know, it's it would just be like essentially any other residential site. You know, there wouldn't be, I mean, you might have a box truck coming in, but that's not gonna create any more noise. You know, there's no equipment really running on site. So, you know, we're we're not, we don't have any kind of excessive noise coming up to site.
Plant facility is uh open twenty four hours a day.
I the current one, I believe so. Uh I don't think there's any gate there now and um yeah, there's they don't stop them from coming. As far as I'm aware.
This is George Seal again. Is that typical of your client's operations that they're open twenty four seven?
It that is taboo, yes.
Thank you. I I would just point out that um. If. There was a lot of nighttime activity there that created a nuisance. Uh the town under this ordinance has the authority to require a noise study. Um I I'm guessing that, you know, it'll. I don't know how many people don't have better things to do than go at midnight to uh their storage locker, but um maybe somebody does. I hope for reasons I have no idea about, and hopefully they're not having parties here, but um.
And boy, if gets a guy out at midnight, he's gonna go get his stuff.
Yeah, right. So hopefully that's it, an uh an extreme anomaly.
Um yeah. Um I get get a question, it is almost. That's not too hard, but uh Hans is a rare miss. The original. And it is all relates to the buffering uh. Then the original application called for uh.
Thirty.
Thirty trees to be planted. It it's rather ambiguous as to where those thirty trees were supposed to have been planted. George, did you, I think you asked for a copy of the, you never get.
Yeah, Hans showed kind of required to the meeting, so I had a chance to read that it. You're right, it's it um not specific.
No, it's not specific at all. Uh we don't even know who the neighbor is uh that we're supposed to be protecting. Uh but uh the the original application permit called for. Planking of thirty plus or minus trees to be agreed upon by the neighbors as stated by them at the planning board meeting. I guess uh question I have of the board is is uh. This and and there are about. Maybe eighteen or so uh where they uh. Arbivide uh planted on the roadside and and the question is, is this something that we can deal with? As part of this application, uh or is it something that we need to essentially say? That was twenty years ago, we don't know who it was, who was, what was. Supposed to be planted, uh but I would say that. Whatever it was, was not adequately done, and I don't know whether we want to deal with that as part of this application to. Uh try to address that.
I it's it's to say what my opinion is and then others can weigh in. Um the uh. I was thinking that we should carve this out from our review of this application and formally. Uh. Request Hans to address it, because I I view it as an enforcement issue of the prior permit. I don't think the permit issued two thousand five even followed the ordinance with regard to screening, but that's that's water under the. Bridge, uh you know, if if plain word poached it back then, there's nothing we can do about it at the moment. Uh but I do think what what the only specifics in there is that they be trees, those aren't, the arbivide aren't trees. Uh they're shrubs. Um and on top of everything else, a deer had it at home, there's a very little left. Um so that that's my opinion is to carve it out, not do make it part of this application, because I I have a question on whether or not. I mean, we're essentially reviewing an amendment to the original application and whether we can go back. And alter that original approval. I'm I'm not sure we can, even if I I I mean. Um I'm not certain about that, but but that's that's my thought.
It was a pretty poorly worded permit uh for the.
Well, I I mean. You know, back then, uh that actually the the interestingly, the two thousand one version of this ordinance when it was first approved by voters. Had more stringent vegetative screening requirements than we have today. Required thirty five feet and of course a line of trees along Route one thirty five is not thirty five feet wide planting. Uh so that's why I say they kind of poached it, but um the uh. The uh uh but that's, you know, like I said, uh I I think um. It would be appropriate, uh an appropriate. Uh approach, uh in my opinion, would be for Hans to deal with. Bringing that permit into compliance with the condition of approval and the planting of the. Appropriate number of true trees, you know. Meeting the standard of they have to be a minimum of four feet tall at the time of planting and and spaced twenty five feet on center.
Okay.
Uh that's my opinion, I I'm not saying. Everybody's opinion.
Now, to my to my knowledge, uh Chuck and uh. Phil Stone have not submitted anything different. Since last meeting uh regarding bufferings uh tree planting than you did to last time, is that correct?
That is correct.
I just, well. Part of me says, and we need to look at this site to see where we're trying to buffer. Buffering standards uh say. Um screening of neighboring property shall be required wherever it poses non-residential use of, let's say, residential development. Multi-family building or home. And it's not located within the village system. I read that and. I have a question. How far do we, how far? It it says. So. Wherever a proposed non-residential use of, let's say, residential development, multi-family building or home. Uh the question is. Do you have to screen the? The uh. Facility from the home? Or do you screen it from the property? Uh in other words. If this property goes down five hundred feet and there's a hole. Up in the corner. Is the ordinance only requires screening of the home, the bit, you know, the the and I I think that's what it says. I don't think it says you have to plan a buffer along the entire uh width or length of the. Thing, we're providing screening for where people live. And uh. But the the two thoughts, one, I think that that is. Uh is where we're we're providing the screening and then the second thing is. Is the screening as proposed adequate to meet the standard in the ordinance for those home areas and. I don't. Um my thinking is that. Yeah, number now screening is being provided or proposed. Doesn't really, isn't going to be able to meet that standard.
Um I agree, uh the I think I. The ordinance, I believe, is focused at providing screening from an existing occupied home. And uh and so really, what's most applicable in that regard is. Uh it was most applicable to the uh original development, which immediately abuts a residence. Not occupied residence. Uh in this proposal, uh if you look at um. And I don't know what other people have and the. I I I went to the town office to get a copy of the packet and and it wasn't available there, but um. If you look at uh page five, the uh of the site drawing, uh the lighting landscaping utilities plan. It shows the butter vegetative screening and if I say something wrong, Chuck, could you please weigh in and correct me? Uh the uh a budding, uh so the um. It calls for uh a planting as as Chuck uh uh outlined earlier of. Two alternating lines of um of the uh of trees uh. Primarily uh white pine, if I recall correctly, and maybe some maple uh the uh. Uh and you know, a screening of. The wadley uh home. Despite the fact that, you know, they're the ones that sold the property. Uh the uh I think is some screening on that. I guess it would be the north uh property line. Uh would be appropriate that meets the uh meets the uh requirements of the ordinance, what's shown in that. Number uh site plan number five does not meet the ordinance, it's not um. Um I don't believe it it is uh twenty five feet wide, maybe I'm wrong about that, but it needs to be twenty five feet wide. Um the other thing too is that plan calls for the planting of some. Although it wasn't clear to me where uh weeping willows and the ordinance requires native trees, weeping willows are exotic from China. Exotic uh ornamental. It's not a native tree. Only needed willow we have is black willow. So I guess, Rich, to answer your question, my perspective is that. Under this application, no further uh screening is required of the property to the south or the residents to the south. Uh since that was, should have been addressed as part of the original application.
Okay, when you say that though, um. Are you, I guess your your point is that the if the screening was done. On the original construction. Uh that would be there, it would shield that property, even even though this property is being expanded. Further down, it it wouldn't be affecting the the visibility from that house.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna have some visibility, but it isn't. Right in their face. I don't think any screenings required on the opposite side of the um. Uh wadley driveway, it's pretty heavily wooded there. Um it the question I have is, should additional screening be provided? Uh between the pro newly proposed development and expansion and. Built that he wantly's house. Because they're gonna have a direct view of it, even though they're a good distance away.
Yeah, it is kind of ironic that uh. Well, while the these. Buildings are new, but it's kind of ironic that. Dylan. Debbie owned the the property. At the original buildings built with no screening, but now we're requiring, we're requiring.
Yeah, no, it there is a certain amount of irony there and um. And obviously, they're not here, they're they were butter, I assume they were notified um and but um. Um and 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 while we're talking about screening, the this Google Earth even shows that little arbivide. I mean, as a as veget vegetative uh screening, it really is a joke in half.
I think that it's further down over the bank, the the bank is more of a drop on the height of the. Drops.
Yeah, yeah, right. But um as I said before, you know. Bringing that up to what was required in the original approval, in my opinion, could be, we could just, we could delegate that to. Hans or maybe delegated the right word, we don't have that authority, but um defer that to Hans to address with the applicant. I I got the impression from statements Chuck made at the June first meeting that they're more willing to bring that up the stuff.
Uh can I chime in if you guys have a second? So if we, it is determined that we do need to increase that front buffer, again, we we'd be willing to. Um and as for the willow, it was intended, that should have been um maple tree. And that should be an easy fix. Um and then the staggering, I do have it as just over twenty five feet. Um you know, once the trees are grown a little bit and fill out. And then they're spaced within the twenty five feet apart. Um and then really, I'm just looking, you know. We were just proposing screening along the proposed buildings. Um that wadley uh site, it looks like there's some, you know, other activity going on down where we're proposing new buildings. Uh and really, I think the purpose, my understanding was that the purpose of the screening was to um kind of. Create a buffers of sorts between residential properties um and commercial, so you know. Any issues that the butters would have would kind of, you know, we would take into account quite heavily.
Chuck, uh a follow up question to that point um. I I I was limited to using the site plan that was online, so you know, there's always a question, what is the real scale when you're looking at it? Uh under those circumstances, but um it appeared to me that uh the depth. Of uh what you proposed in that uh site plan number five, the lighting landscaping utilities plan. Was less than twenty five feet in depth. But I can't be sure of that because of um you know, how the how the scale uh gets um. Changed uh with magnification or and reduction. So the question, I guess the question is, how deep is it? That what you're proposing.
We, I have adjusted like twenty six feet, you know, from edge to edge essentially. Um you can see on the plan, there's our ten foot setback line. Um it's the dash line just off the property line. Um that for gives you kind of an idea, um and then that fence is about. The fence is roughly thirty feet. From the edge of. The property line and our buffer is just on the o- other outside of the optional fence there.
Well. On that basis, um if. Um the trees were limited to native trees. Uh a minimum of four feet in height. Um and I believe specifications in that plan fall for that. Um. Uh it may be that they meet the standard on that or their property line. And eliminate the pussy walls. Not to get hung up on pussy walls, but.
Is that is that different from the other willow you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah. Um, those, uh, pussy willows, I mean, they're what the residents in attendance said that they wanted. Uh, I'm talking in entirely different location. I'm talking, uh, on the north side of the, uh, proposed expansion. Uh, between the development and Bill and, and Debbie Watley's house. I'm not even talking about the lack of, the fact that they're not, the existing development didn't provide, uh, the, um. Vegetative screen, if you will, I'm not sure you can call it a screen, the plantings that were spent, you know, made a condition of the, uh. Of the two thousand and five approval. As I said before, I, I think that's something for you to follow up on, uh, since it's more than enforcement now.
Um, third question, I may, I was. Doing some stuff while some of the talking was going on. Uh, on the northern side, it, it does show, uh, weeping willow. And did I miss, uh, whether Chuck was agreeing to plant something other than weeping willow? I, I assume I did miss that. Okay, and, uh. From Greg?
Well, I just want to get this on the south side, I don't know.
South side is fine.
Uh, but you don't think the south side needs the buffer and will.
I guess that.
I was thinking of looking right down that, I would, I would assume. They would want buffer there as well.
My thinking is, my thinking at this point is they have proposed it. And unless they're granting, unless, uh, Chuck. Changes the application. Uh, personally, I would just so, uh, say personally, I would like to see them keep that.
I would as well.
I, I, I do think that, uh. There'll be some screening. Um, improve, um, the, if the project be improved by the planting of those trees.
I agree.
Do they have a couple of other questions this good time or?
Uh, yes, go ahead.
Uh, Chuck, uh, clarification question for you, uh. The, uh, uh, and this is based on the site, uh, the, uh, site plan of the proposed development, uh. Am I interpreting that correct, that all that's proposed at this point in time is the six, um, uh. Thirty-three hundred, uh, square foot units and, and not the six self-storage units that are also showing on the site plan?
Um, there's, uh, seven buildings, the, uh, thirty feet by one hundred and ten, the large ones. And then this, what's the six smaller mobile ones? Are you, is that the ones you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're showing on the site plan and it says, uh, future for future development, but I just want to make sure that. That's not part of what you're asking approval for today.
Uh, yes, I mean, typically they'll build these, um, and then if they fill up, um, they have smaller units. That, um, they're, they're, you know, they're mobile, they can be moved around, um, in those, that seems like a good, uh, uh, location per, you know, if. If this fills up, um, for additional units.
Okay, just so it's clear that if that happened, that, that there would need to be, it wouldn't be a big deal, but an amendment to this application or, or. At that time in the future.
That would be required as an amendment, okay. That, that's, yeah, we would, that'd be fine.
Okay, how, how do we document other than amendments? That, or does it say future?
It says future, I, I, you know how, yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was interpreting that correctly.
Hopefully in that case, it would be, you know, you, and simpler. Application, you know, we kind of show what we're thinking maybe down the line, but.
Yeah, I, that's, we've been there before and it, usually we, we accept the letter and a, and a revised site plan.
Just calling it proposed storage.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or, yeah, as an amendment, um. Let's see. Um. Getting back to the stormwater management system, and I realize that you have yet to apply to DEP, and so we don't know. If, uh, what you proposed in the site plans you've submitted to us will be acceptable to DEP or not, um. But, um, I mean, you're certainly using the correct, um. At least for our ordinance's purposes, which comes directly from DEP, uh, the right phosphorus, uh, discharge, uh, pounds per acre. Uh, to Belgrade Stream and Mezalonsky Lake, but could you run through that site plan and, and maybe bring it back up on the screen to, uh. Show us how it in fact is gonna, uh, in infiltrate, uh, stormwater, cause the standard in our ordinance. Is that stormwater runoff cannot exceed what it, uh. Is currently under undeveloped conditions.
Uh, sure. You pop this open?
It, it, and part, part of my question gets to, uh, I did not see it, um. In your detail plans, uh, a detail of the, uh, of, of the infiltration pond. Uh, maybe I'm got the wrong end of the stick, but, um, if you could touch on that as well.
Uh, sure, uh, can you all see my screen?
Yeah, we can see it.
Oh, we're perfect, so. Um, right now, the existing site, um, it kind of drains off to both sides into a little swale here on the south side. Um, and then through this culvert here on the north side. Um, and then the whole site is going, is sloping, um. From west to east down towards the railroad. Um, each of our buildings here, they're, 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 they're on a foundation sloped at one percent, so the runoff will come. South towards this south side, um, into a swell here, and that way we're, the all new improvements will be captured. In either the south swell or the north swell here. Um, and then it's all coming down to the existing low spot, um, this infiltration basin. Um. And that way, so the runoff from the field right now and a majority of the, some of, oh, majority of the gravel and buildings on site. Is just going straight down here off to, um, I believe some wetlands are further up, down, um. Further down the railroad. Um, and they're just going there untreated, you know, just, uh, and from the field and within, sorry? And the infiltration basin will capture all that additional runoff caused from the impervious areas. And, uh, it's recharged, re, uh, you know, treated, pollutants removed and infiltrated back into the ground. Which is, uh, ends up in a reduction, um, of runoff from the site. Um, in this infiltration basin. Um, you know, we're gonna come down a little bit into the ground, um, and kind of use, use this existing slope. Um, from the railroad, um, to carve out a basin. Um, and then we line the bottom of it, uh, with some stand, um, and we have notes on. I, there should have been a detail, um, I can check. Um, you know, to not compact the soil so that. Um, it's, it remains infiltr-, it can infiltrate, uh, without getting clogged up, um, from compacted soils. Um, and then I have a culvert and outlet structure here, which controls, um, the flow. So when the larger storms, um, rain, um, you know, it's not all overflowing at once and causing erosion problems. Um, and with this design, we, we don't have, we, I don't anticipate any real major issues with, uh, DEP. Um, you know, our, our BMP, our management system should be perfectly adequate, uh, for the size of the site and, uh, the purpose. If you have any. Specific questions, uh, feel free to ask.
Uh, this George seal again, Chuck, um, the, uh, you know, the, and. I think Rich maybe up and, and others alluded to this at the June first meeting, the beauty of. Having something fall under DEP's jurisdiction is we benefit from their technical expertise, I mean, we essentially have none. And we don't have access to any, but, um, the, uh, uh, and so. We don't really need to get into the weeds of the adequacy and the infiltration rates of that, that basin, uh. Uh, will, you know, rely on their, uh, technical judgment on that. And, uh, once you come out the other end of that process, you know, as Richard mentioned earlier, that'll. Uh, that permit will su- uh, suffice for, uh, as, um. Proof, proof that you've met the burden of, uh, under our ordinance, uh, once that permit submitted to us, uh, later on. I, I was just, I, I, really, part of the reason for my question is I, I couldn't find a, a detailed drawing for the, uh, the, the, uh, bottom of the basin or, uh, and. Um, again, because I was looking at plans that were online, uh, I may have missed some notes that were there. Uh, simply because they were too small or. Font minus ten. Thank you.
Uh, sure.
I got a question then. So looking at this, uh, drawing, I just, you have, um. There is like, uh, a bead chain here. Looking from the top that goes all around the entire, um. Well, uh, building site. And it is labeled to be an optional feature, six feet high. Uh, fence. So we, we've been talking about, uh, buffers and all this kind of stuff, so, um. Is it, is this optional? So I'm not sure if that's something that you use as part of the joint to sell to your client. Or it does something that is gonna be part of the projects.
Uh, good question. We put optional, um, you know, some sites. You are in poorer parts of towns, uh, or not poor, but, uh. You know, they, they require fencing, uh, to keep people off that, um, shouldn't be there. And we put optional, uh, when they're quoted, they're getting quotes for building, um, if they do end up. You know, putting in that chain link fence, we'd like it to be shown so that, um. Contractors can give an adequate quote to the cost of construction. Um, so really at that time, we would, they would determine if they needed it, um, and they would, you know, in discussion with a contractor about the cost of the project.
But personally, there's no fencing there.
Currently, no.
Yeah.
So we, I. We don't anticipate them needing to, or wanting to put fence, but, uh, we do like to show it and, uh, as an option.
Again, my, my question to, to the board in the ordinance, we have any requirement about that or any restriction about that?
I don't believe we do.
So if eventually the project ended with that fence, it's not, we're gonna be.
Don't think it. My right question to the ordinance, it doesn't address fencing, whether it's required or whether. It can't be, uh. But at this point. Well, I guess what you're saying at this point, you're looking at as an option, but you're not planning on doing it. Correct?
Correct. I, I don't anticipate them wanting to do it, it, you know, it'll save them money, but if. If they do end up, you know, determining that they, they do think it's a good idea, then, um, we'll ship, we're showing it, you know, as. It's approved and they could build it.
Okay, um. Any other questions on the board? And if not. I would open it up to the. Mr. Dowd, uh, pick five for questions that they may add.
Or comment. Or comments.
Yeah.
Uh, general question is they're gonna be, or is there already, uh, security cameras basically installed?
I'm not entirely sure on that one. I don't think there are on this site. Um, there have, they've done them on other, we've done them on other, uh, similar self-storage projects, but. This is a pretty good area. Uh, I don't think we've even have a history of the site needing them, so. Uh, we don't anticipate it, um, being needed.
Have there, uh, have there ever been any police activities at the site because of theft or breaking and entering?
I, I wouldn't be able, I, I'm not sure.
I don't know if that's for the planning order.
Well, I know that they, they've said that they're not depending on the, uh, chairs upon for. Security.
I mean, I, I've had my first break in since, uh, I put up the yellow building in two thousand, so I think, uh. You know, trespassing and, uh, burglary is unfortunately probably wrong.
Bish, you have any questions?
Oh, Rich, you should know that I do. So, um. I just want to give you all just also a little bit of history, cause it sounds like none of you were involved with that two thousand and five application. Um, first of all, I was the person that wanted the trees. I know they didn't meet the standard, but you know, there's also something about not trying to ruffle feathers, at least there was something that was planted. Um, and so I, you know. I, that was my request and that's how it was met and that's how it was left. So, um, any more trees that we can plant would be great. That being said, just the history of this and, and, and there are a couple of questions that I have is. When, when Bill approached. You know, our little neighborhood here that's directly impacted by these. Um, one of the things that was really important and he really conveyed was that. Um, the structures, you know, looked more like a house, they didn't really look like sto- like storage sheds per se, there, you can have some really. You know, um. I, I guess, let me, let me rephrase that, I'm trying to be. There's a quality of, of, of care that was taken in building these storage sheds. And it, and if you drive past, it's not, you know, you don't like kind of look right away then, and you can tell that they're storage sheds, I mean, you can, but it, there, there's a quality to them. And he was, he was really, uh, a, a very thoughtful neighbor in the way that he constructed the, the storage sheds so that it wouldn't be as. Um. Commercial and industrial looking like some, like so many of the storage sheds can. Which fit a little bit more into our neighborhood feel and that, um, so I have no idea also, you know, are the design, are you gonna keep with the same design of these buildings? So that it continues on with the same look? Is that one question that I have, because obviously that aesthetics is really important. Or are you gonna put on seven buildings that look like regular storage sheds that, you know, don't, don't really. Fit into the, our, our neighborhood, and this is our neighborhood. Part of the other thing is that, you know, Bill does have an impervious driveway. It's impervious for a reason. Because it does provide filtration. Okay, the surface water runoff issues that you're going to be now creating with an impervious surface, which is very extensive. Changes the dynamics of that entire area. To say that it hasn't had any infiltration or any filtration as it exists now, I. Pardon me for saying this, but it's not a correct statement. Because there, that whole field is an entire filtration system, it's a natural filtration system. Okay, so when you're creating these impervious situ-, the impervious situation that you're now creating, it now creates. A totally different dynamic than what was originally proposed and was originally presented to our neighborhood. So now everything has changed. I'd have concerns with the amount of imperv- impervious surface that's being created. I have concerns with the way you're, the design for that, uh, I. If it were, if it were me and Bill and if they were, if I was down with Bill and Debbie, is I'd be concerned about what's happening to my well. Where's my well in relation to that swale? And the fact of the matter is that, you know, that impervious surface, you're gonna be, you have no idea. What is actually going in? Is someone gonna be testing the well down there to make sure that what you're, what is going on in these storage sheds isn't being transmitted in, through the water? And into that groundwater. Is there any testing that's gonna be there? Is there any testing that's gonna be there? Who's doing the enforcement to make sure that within these storage sheds? That these hazardous materials aren't going to be put there. Who's gonna be making sure that propane tanks aren't stored there? Who's gonna be, who is gonna be doing that enforcement? You know, I mean, I just, I'm curious to know these things and, and, and I think that um. I think it's one thing to have a family-owned business, that they're being very thoughtful with the neighbors and how that's being approached. And then coming in with a very, because I'm sorry, but all-purpose storage, this is not the only all-purpose storage unit that all-purpose storage has. This is a large conglomerate of all-purpose storage unit, of, of storage units, large conglomerate. And so you go, you shift from a family-owned business. To a large conglomerate of stu- of, of a business. In a residential section. And not only are you taking that, that, those five units, you're more than doubling it. You know, the, I mean, I. I'm just asking the planning board to please be thoughtful in the considerations. When, you know, when you are looking at this application to understand that this is no longer a family business. This is a big business that's really changing the complexity of our neighborhood. And I, and I really would question the traffic studies that are going on. I really would question. What's happening environmentally with this creation and the amount of, of. Surface area that's now being created there. And that literally trickle-down effect. And then, um. So I guess, you know, the, just to, to, to just, you know, when, when you think about whether or not. You wanna approve this to the planning board, you know, are they gonna be required to continue the same type of structure and design? Because I think that would be important. Especially if they're gonna have seven buildings. I just, um. I'm, I'm concerned about the environmental impact of it. I'm concerned about the service water runoff issues that you have. Now you have gates. I mean, so you're, you're just changing the complexity of what this was. It's no longer a family business. And I think that's, it's unfortunate that. The situation has changed. And that you now have a very large commercial business coming in. And is that really what we, what, you know? I'm sorry, I, I don't mind having a family business there. I am all for the family business, but I'm not all for a large conglomerate coming in and doubling what's happening there. At all. And I have to look at it. And I ha- and, and I, I, I'm sorry, I just, I, I see the traffic, I hear what's going on, I have to be concerned about what's being put into these buildings. I have, I have animals, I have livestock, I have a farm. You know, I just, I, I. The traffic terrifies me. I mean, the, the, the traffic and people know one thirty-five is a speedway. It's a speedway. As it is, nobody listens to forty-five miles an hour, and now you're gonna be adding on to it more cars, more traffic. Really? Is this what we want Belgrade to look like? Is it?
Let me, let me just say that uh. Planning board in the end has to look at this and whether or not. The project meets the standards of the ordinance. Uh, and some of the questions or concerns you've raised are things that. We may have our own personal. Thoughts on, but in the end, we're gonna have to. Not base our decision on whether it's a conglomerate or a local, but whether or not it actually. Meets the terms of the ordinance.
Right.
But I, I understand your comments.
Right, and that's because Belgrade has no zoning. So.
Part. That's only part of it. Um, the other part is that, for example, you. Brought up a question about the architectural design. This ordinance has no architectural design standards.
I know, I know.
So consequently, there, we don't have any grounds to dictate how, how the building is uh designed uh. In terms of roof line or any of those kinds of uh, kinds of things, that's really uh. Progative of the developer. Um, the issue, it, it, a, a more extreme example was uh, this thing also came up. Uh, it never went anywhere, but when Dollar General was proposed on the lot next door to the town office. Um, and, and potentially on Route twenty-seven closer to the village. Um, we don't have the authority to require um. A, a certain type of architectural design like a Freeport does, for example.
No, I get it. I'm just, I'm just, it's, it's, it's just, it's too bad, is, is my point. It's just too bad. Because.
I do have a follow-up question for you though, um. Uh, this is George Seal again, by the way. Um, you had mentioned a concern about a well, where. Uh, is that your personal drinking water supply?
No, I, I, no, I, I had prefaces by saying if I was Bill and Debbie, I, that would be my concern because of where that. Where that, um, you know, I have no idea, but, but where that swale's coming in and because of, of everything trickling down there. It, to me, it would, it would be a question that should be asked, is what are the precautions that are being taken?
And what, what risks are you concerned about in a, uh, beyond hazardous materials and petroleum?
Well, you're dealing with an impervious surface that's now running down there, right?
Right.
So you've got, you know, who knows what, is my point. So, you know, I, I mean. I'm just, I'm asking a question to kind of be thoughtful about what we, what is happening here. And to say, have, you know, have you really considered where the swale is and, and, and what's gonna happen? With it and what's the proximity to somebody's well? You know, there's horses that are downhill of this. They're grazing on that pat- on that land. What does that do to, to the land? You know, I mean, it, when you start getting into an, a pervious situation versus impervious. Um, you know, there's a lot, lot of more um. Cause and effect of, of items, especially hazardous items or really anything. You know, salt, um, anything that, that's running downhill. Um, so I just, you know, I, I'm just. I have an environmental background. I'm just bringing up questions that I would be concerned about, um, that, um.
The.
Last thing to think about.
Yeah, no, it, well, they're all good points, the um, uh. But the focus of the ordinance and the standards we have. Uh, with regard to stormwater runoff and, and subsequently phosphorus runoff in stormwater. Is preventing those nutrients from uh, and stormwater being carried by the stormwater. To attribute to, to one of the lakes or in this case, over bridges. And, and that, that is the whole focus of the uh stormwater infiltration system that they've proposed. Whether it's adequate or not will be up to DEP and their experts to decide, not us. Um, and that's a good thing because like I said before, we don't have any expertise nor do we have access to expertise. But um, so I, I'm, you know, I, I'm uh. Compared to many other developments that we come before us, uh, I'm fairly confident that the uh phosphorus runoff will be addressed adequately. Um, the uh, uh. In terms of risk uh to groundwater and to the best of my knowledge, you know wells that will be at risk given that the uh. Groundwater flow probably is towards Belgrade Stream. Um, you know, it is that um, is really about. Will there be larger quantities of hazardous materials or petroleum stored at this site um versus uh. Let's say it was a gas station or let's say it was a bulk storage plant or let's say what, uh, what was being proposed was an auto. Repair garage or body shop which uses their quantities of hazardous materials and solvents. Um, I, I would agree with you, those would be greater concerns, but in this case, uh, I, I just don't see a great risk. Um, particularly given that they're not uh allowing um. The storage of those types of materials in any quantity other, beyond household quantities essentially, um.
And who's checking? Just curious.
Well. You say who's checking?
Yeah, I mean, just curious. Says it in the lease. You're, you're, you're not supposed to speed either. I mean, yeah, I'm just asking who's checking?
Uh, sorry, what was that?
Could you check, uh, uh, address the question of, you know, the enforcement of the lease um and, and at, as. Uh, you know, who checking? Yeah, I mean, in terms of who, you know, who, how will you know if somebody. Uh, brings in large quantities of agricultural fertilizer or pesticides or whatever?
Uh, sure, I can address that and I also like to address uh her, her other comments as well, but um. This is a tough one because we're, we're not looking in, we're not opening up, um, you know, units to check to see if they're all compliant. Really, the only time I could, um, and this is just us, we, um. Hypoth- hypothes- hypothesizing, but it would be if there was a spill of any sort or, you know, it was out in the open, you know, someone left it open, but. Um, you know, we're not doing uh checks or anything like that. It's just, you know, you sign the agreement and you're, um. You know, any sort of fine that maybe um in there would be, have to be paid if it was discovered that you were not following the rules and you'd be, uh, you know, asked to leave essentially. As for some of the other comments, I hope that addresses that one, you know, it's, it's a tough one to. You know, say explicitly, um. As for the aesthetics, you know, these buildings are, they're gonna be down quite a ways from the road and we're already, you know, all the way at the back, um. You, and in the past, there's been not um all-purpose, but some uh rather unsightly colored. Uh, self-storage units. I don't know if you've ever seen them, but these will be likely green or blue to match the um existing doors. Um, so it won't be um too crazy. Uh, my guess would be that it'll be metal sheeted roofs. Uh, it looks like the existing ones are shingled. But that's just, uh, you know, the way the manufacturers make them. And that, and it shouldn't really even be visible, um, you know, we're down quite a ways uh for stormwater. You know, we're doing the best we can, uh, just, we, you know, we, all that we're held to is to meet the state regulations, um. And we're doing, you know, we're capturing quite all the runoff and, uh, you know, doing infiltrating, um. And before it was self-storage, I assume it was all a field, um, you know, and I don't think there's any issues now. Um, the family business, um, while it was a family business before, it is still self-storage. Um, you know, you're not really going in to talk to the owners of this place. It's really just, you come, you put your stuff in, you know, and you come back. And then environmental, like you said, you know, with me, the phosphorus, it would only really be runoff from a car, you know. Like, like any road runoff, essentially would be the worst contaminants, you know, it's like a, a very. Small parking lot or something, you know, someone parks their car, might be a small gas drip or whatever, um, but. You know, we don't think there's gonna be too many major environmental issues there. I hope that kind of addresses my, my view on that.
Oh, now, another point of clarification. Are the stormwater runoff calculations done just on the new buildings or are they done on the total site?
We take a look at the entire site, so anything that low spot down at the east by the railroad, um, I take that as a. Observation point, we call it, and anything, any runoff that comes to that point, um, is captured in our, our view of the site.
Well, when you calculate the impervious area, are you only talking about the seven new buildings?
Um, the seventy thousand additional impervious is just the new impervious, but in the drainage calculations, we would account for all it. You know, we take the existing and analyze that and then take the after-development, which includes all existing and proposed impervious. Um, and compare the two and we find a net reduction.
So that's, that's a yes.
Yes, yeah, we take it, we take into account, yeah, the existing.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think we, as a fair amount of discussion questions. Are we ready to move on or what is the board's pleasure?
I, I have one. Question that I, um, that, my question's been answered, um. Well, um, uh, the one question that still kind of bugs me though is not knowing the number of rental units. Uh, and I just. Worried. That, uh, we don't. Know what we're being asked to improve in that regard. Because, because each unit will be a separate L C. That's directly related to traffic. The number of people going in there, uh, et cetera, and, um. It, it really, it, it, it's the relationship of that to uh the traffic projections and maybe this is something that uh Chuck could clarify some further in terms of how. I, I know he, he said earlier that the uh traffic uh estimates were based on the square footage. Rather than the number of units, um, and I know that our ordinance. Like, for example, determining the number of parking spaces required for retail. Based it on the square footage, but that retail's different than, this is more like an apartment building. How many apartments do you have, you know? This is how many buil- buildings you have, it's how many units are you renting? Um, and, um, I don't know, Chuck, maybe you want to take another shot at trying to explain that to me, but.
Sure, you, you are right, that's, you know, the uh IT traffic generation, they, you know, they take a look at however many. Uh, self-storage mini warehouses, they take a look at, um, and they come up with an average. And it, you know, we, that's all we can base it on is, um, thousand square feet. And, you know, I can certainly rely on say that, you know, that's such a, a very minor number that even if it were, you know, tiny units, um, which are. You usually have a large mix of them just for, you know, to, for, um. To advertise, you know, we have lots of sizes, uh, you know, even if it were. Um, more units than I anticipate, you know, the, even the, the traffic wouldn't greatly increase that much. Um, you know, if you really need something, uh, we guess maybe a condition that, you know, we give you a number of units in the, the, uh. I think they call them a breakdown, like a unit breakdown, which gives you the number of size of each unit, and we could provide that, um. You know, is this a condition, um, kind of give you an idea of how many more units, but it's gonna be very similar to what, what are there now, um. You know, it looks like they have four on an end, five on an end, and then, you know, every eight or ten feet across.
So, so the, um. The, I, I, excuse me, I, I forget the na- uh, the name of those, those national engineering standards, but so if I understood you correctly, what you said was that. They take the number of units into account, but on the basis of a, like a national average, uh, number of units per thousand square feet, for example, or something of that nature.
Right, they kind of say, you know, if you have a self-storage facility, you're looking at, you know, one, uh, just a. Not rough number here, but, you know, one trip per hour per thousand square feet. Per day or, or whatever, they, and it's based on, and then you multiply it out by, you know, sixteen existing thousand plus additional twenty-three thousand. And that coming gives you your fifty-eight or fifty-six trips a day. And, you know, even if it were. Double that, you know, twelve an hour, is still, you know, for a self-storage like this, it's, it's not a whole lot.
No. Uh, I, I guess that answers my question. I, you know, I'm in no position to question them using a national standard that we require them to, to, to use.
Yeah, yeah, and, and. I mean, I agree there, and just my non-technical sense, I'm thinking that. Unless these are post office boxes or whatever, it's gonna be pretty difficult to get. A hundred people coming in there an hour to the facility.
Yeah.
But you're right, uh the national standard that people go by, who are we to question or to object or whatever?
Uh one more last question, we'll let Pete go first.
Yeah, my my question about size thing. Uh they should they should be able to come up with a typical uh uh unit. Uh yeah, this particular size, you've got a four or five in there, and for that size, uh how many uh. Twelve quarters you're gonna have in there, how many uh four by fours? It should be a typical type of standard they have, they can use, they could let. This board and so other people who have questions like that woman has, they have a general idea of what the typical unit. What the typical units look like, you know, in in a block, I understand. That doesn't make a difference.
Chuck, uh, building on that question, uh uh George Seal again, uh is there a reason why? You and your client don't know at this point in time how many units and how big they're gonna be. Are it it it, I mean, I don't know anything about this, you know, in business, your business model or anything, but.
This is a little bit out of my uh scope of focus, but I can definitely take a shot here, um you know, they take a look at um. Like surrounding um self-storage facilities, I'm not entirely sure where the nearest one is. Um, you know, to see which what which units, which size units are the most um sought after, the most rented. Um and they try to, you know, you know, favor towards that size, you know, um. If, you know, have a lot of people with larger items in the area, they assume that. The new storage facility will have, should have larger um storage units, but they always have a pretty good mix. Uh just because you can never predict exactly what people are gonna need, but um they run a model on it and determine, you know, exactly what they need, but um. I I couldn't say exact at this time exactly what they're doing.
So it's based on the local market, basically, but obviously that decision has to be made before they go to construction and uh. And land a contract for the construction, right?
Ri- right, yeah, the number of doors and and the internal structure there, but. You know, once they get approved, they start taking a look at. You know, what the best breakdown is.
Well, I mean, if the, yeah. I'm not sure um if this really matters, but if we wanted to, we could require by way of a condition. That that information be submitted prior to the start of construction, they need it anyway before they start construction um. And um.
Yes, what are we gonna do, what what's that going to accomplish?
Well, that's the other part of my question, but uh I I'm just saying, you know, that was of a not interest. Uh to the board, um I I think, I I mean, I'm satisfied with the fact that there is a relationship between the traffic. Estimate and the number of units, it's not based on the specifics of this. One, but on a national average.
I was thinking the same thing I think Greg was thinking at the time, is we tell them to submit that to us, what are we gonna do? Deny the permit because we don't like it at that point, or it's.
It would be just, it would just be information if that was.
I I I I believe that, you know, you have X amount of space, thirty-three hundred, you can only fit so much stuff in thirty-three hundred space, you know? I think the difference in how many units isn't a huge difference in the traffic, because you can only get so much stuff in there.
Right.
You know, like, i- if they, if you know, if you're talking thirty-three hundred as opposed to sixty-six hundred, now that's a big, you know, a big deal, because it's more stuff. I mean, one, one, one customer can only bring so much stuff in a, you know, in a, you know, a new hall, whatever. So I don't think the units would make a big difference in traffic, I think it's space, space is the most important thing, like how much stuff is there? You know, that's probably why they go off with that average.
Uh Tom, uh I might be able to add something there, I have looked into storage, and I have uh basically uh. Client submitted, and basically what I'm seeing, based on that building, it would easily. Be configured to either twenty units or easily twenty-eight units, depending on if you wanted a little five. Foot wide spaces, so potentially you're talking a difference of twenty versus twenty-eight. So to me, that's an insignificant increase in the potential volume.
Yeah, I'm I'm saying this, like the projection is six, right, um the the national average is a hundred is the cut-off, right? I think he said.
We may have studied that.
Yeah, but I thought he said a hu- a hundred is the max, right? For that permit? Chuck?
Yeah, I believe it was a hundred trips per hour for the um.
Right.
The traffic permit.
Right now, your projection would be six.
The 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 average right now, yeah, we anticipate six trips an hour.
The amount of units that are going in there, I don't think are gonna be able to affect that number, that projected number of six to go over a hundred. It's not even gonna be close, so no matter what the units are, it's gonna be under a hundred, the projection at least.
Yeah, I think. On Mr. Dow basically saying the same thing, that on the margins, it it's, you know, not a large incremental increase uh at the at the maximum.
Well, I thought you were saying it is a big, it is a.
Potentially, I don't know what the average is, but to me, if you divide twenty-eight by twenty. You're almost getting, you know, just roughly a fifty percent increase. Or a forty percent increase.
But even, I guess my thing, I'm agreeing with Nick uh myself with. Uh if the national standard says it's six per hour.
Right.
You would have, you would have to uh. Quadruple that or more more to to even come close to.
Yes, exactly. You know, they're projecting six trips an hour, the hundred, hundred is the is the the limit. I just don't see that the the amount of of units, whether they vary from being twenty to twenty-eight, as bumping, going from six to over a hundred. So I think no matter how many units they put in there, if they put all five foot units in there, you know, and then they put, you know, fifty in there, I think it's still gonna come under. A hundred, hundred, you know, per per hour, y- you know, they're gonna be, they're gonna be good no matter what.
Well, quite a clarification, was it hundred per hour or a hundred per day?
Was that?
They were done a day.
Hundred per day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, six per hour.
Six per hour.
Um one last question for me, Chuck, for you, um and this is just a follow-up. Um this person uh question uh. Um, how how does your client provide uh oversight of a facility like this? Uh there's not gonna be an office, there's not gonna be any personnel there, uh it's a essentially a remote operation. Uh I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, uh do they have personnel that do a routine inspection to? You know, check on. Building damage, whether there has been a leak at one of the units that um or uh, you know, with oil coming out the door or. How 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 do they manage, how do they provide that uh oversight, how does uh as far as the way they operate their business?
They have a number of, um they call project managers, um I believe they kind of get a zone. Um, you know, and they take surrounding area, all the whatever storage facilities they have in a in such an area. Um and I I couldn't tell you if they have a routine. Um, you know, but they do, they are vis- visiting their sites, um you know, making sure that they're running smoothly. Um especially this one, it would, if it's un- if it ends up going under construction, um they'd have someone there quite often, and then following up. Um, I would, I would guess monthly, but I. I don't, I actually, I don't even want to say that, because I'm not certain, but they have project managers and they oversee their 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 sites.
Thank you.
Okay, uh. Anything else? Do we wanna move forward with the uh application uh?
I think we're ready to move on to the uh see if it meets the uh findings exactly.
Do you have a copy of that?
Um. We just.
Oh, we did away.
Yeah, we did that, and and you just need to make sure you give that to us to put in the project file.
Yeah. Okay, uh. The application accepted is complete today, correct? Today is uh.
One fifteen.
Do what?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
One time.
A site visit conducted, is anybody here believe we need to do a site visit?
Which I don't. Yeah, me too. Many times of late.
Board meeting dates, we met uh week prior, two weeks prior, delay or ten ten. Okay, uh we're gonna do the review criteria findings. The board finds that the application for the subject project is complete, and the applicable appi- applicable application fee is paid. In full, the application materials, site plan, the supporting documentations have been submitted. By the applicant, I retain the project file, maintain maintained in the Belgrade town office under project name. Okay, the applicant has requested in writing that the board waived the following uh application requirements. Uh and have the not. Applicant has provided supporting documentation to demonstrate to the board satisfaction that the following ordinance requirements. Are stand or standards are not applicable due to the project size. Okay, here we go, nobody studying the role. The board finds that the project will or will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or a reduction in the land's capacity. To hold water so that an unsound or unhealthy condition exists. Based on the application submitted, some projects, design plan dated, uh let me see.
May.
May.
Yeah.
The soil erosion control plan dated. I would say.
It is um. The initial landscape was done July twenty-six point twenty-two.
Which one is that?
That one, that one is original, just just the landscape.
The erosion control details are on here. It's May ten.
Then May ten, twelve.
Okay, the the question is, does the board find that the project will or will not cause unreasonable soil erosion? Uh or reduction of land capacity to hold water? Nick? Uh no. You're not, yeah. There, I've noticed, George?
But does not.
Will not.
Will not.
Greg will. I will not as well. The board finds that the project will um. Project will not or will have an adverse impact on freshwater wetlands based on um. We got that standard language, I guess, that we put on these things, right?
Oh, yeah, um um based on the application, uh based on application submittals in the public record.
Okay, project will or will not have adverse impact on freshwater wetlands.
Will not. George, will not.
Right, and I as well. The board finds that the project will not or will have an adverse impact on lake pond or stream. Uh based, you know, will not have an inverse on a weight on a string.
Will not. George, will not. Frank will.
Will not as well. Board finds that the project will will not or will provide for adequate stormwater management. Well. George?
Um will with a condition.
Right, will. And may as well, and the condition is that they provide the.
The approval uh prior to the start of construction, and I have some language we consider at the end.
Okay. The board finds that the project will not or will provide adequate sewage disposal. Probably not adequate, not not.
Yeah, there's no. Which words. Or needed.
Yeah.
More importantly.
The board finds that the project is not or is located in a floodplain area. Uh and conforms or does not conform with the Belgrade flood plain flood plain ordinance. Um, it is not in the floodplain, uh well, do we need to vote on that? Uh I.
I think we need to record that, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's not.
Yeah, it's not. Sure, please agree with that.
Board finds that the project will not or will result in air or water pollution. Will not here. George?
Um, will not.
That's not with the conditions.
Well, i- i- it's the same condition, it it once again goes to stormwater and phosphorus.
Great. I both will not as well. The board finds that the project will not or will have sufficient drinking water for current and foreseeable needs. Uh I'd say that's not adequate.
Right, let me just go. Drinking water needed.
The board finds that the project along or in conjunction with existing activities will not or. will not or will adversely impact the quality or quantity of groundwater. Will not with a condition, right? Yeah, I'm not sure the condition.
Yeah, doesn't even need a condition in my opinion, yeah.
Okay, George?
Will not.
Frank? I will vote will not as well.
Yeah, they're not even extracting groundwater. Or discharges.
Yeah. The board finds that the proposed activity will dispose of all solid waste and conforms with all local regulations and the type and quantity of waste proposed to be sent to the town transfer station will not or will exceed its capacity.
Not applicable, I mean, it's not applicable, is it? No.
Only we, you guys last time had a discussion about what if they had to clean out a unit and where would that waste go? And.
We didn't, we didn't answer that.
We never, we believe in the contract. The tenant is responsible for removing all of their contents. Yeah, I think the question, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I was there, was in the context of, you know, like reality TV, you know, an abandoned unit.
Where does it go?
Yeah, where does it go? That would be all purposes responsibility. It would. The question is, is it going to the Belgrade transfer station? If it does, more than likely, the transfer station can handle it easily, but. I mean, it's no different than me. Finally getting around to cleaning out some of my attic.
Or if there was an individual who owned it and decided he didn't want any of it anymore, he's gonna take it.
Yeah. My opinion is that it meets that standard.
Yeah. Thank you. You agree?
Yeah.
Nick? George says is will. Will will not.
Will not, yeah.
And I am a will not as well. Okay. Board finds that the project will not or will have significant detrimental effect on land uses and properties affected by waste, noise, glare, lighting, fumes, smoke, dust, odors or their effects from the project. Board finds the project will or will not.
Will not.
George?
Will not.
Frank? I vote will not as well. Board finds that the project will not or will cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of existing or proposed highways or roads. I think this is one we may have a condition on, that they make sure they get their DOT permit before any work begins.
Right, yeah, that would be my suggestion.
I would have to go back to that, just just for clarification. They were projecting six trips an hour, correct, in room with a limit of a hundred a day? Right?
Yes.
That's what we were saying, a hundred a day.
Right.
Well, if you do six an hour times twenty four, that's like a hundred and forty four trips a day. So you're exceeding the hundred limit. So you're projecting to go more than the limit allowed. If that's, if those are the numbers, if they're projecting six an hour with a hundred max in a day, you're projecting a hundred and forty four trips a day at six an hour times twenty four hours, right? I don't know. I mean, that's the math.
So what was the trigger on that? So I was thinking about this a little differently. I was thinking about it whether or not as a condition handling this, a condition is whether or not it triggers any of DOT's permit requirements or requirements for like a turning lane or something of that nature and leaving that deferring, if you will, to DOT and their engineers make that determination.
The ultimate decision is DOT's as to whether, one, you need a permit and two, where they'll give you a permit.
Right, right, and whether whether the amount of traffic exceeds the ability of the roadway to handle it without a turning lane.
So that not with a condition?
Yeah.
Will not. Grab the condition, yeah, okay. Next votes will not.
Will not with a condition.
Great. I as well.
I'll be surprised if they require a turning lane though.
Yeah. I will. I think so myself. The board finds that the project, to the maximum extent possible, will not or will have an adverse effect on scenic natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historical and archaeological sites, and any public rights for physical or individual access to the shoreline or the water body. Maximum extent possible, will not or will?
Will not.
I mean, neighbors will not, George?
Will not.
Great. As well. The board finds that the project, to the maximum extent possible, will not or will have an adverse effect on significant wildlife habitat and critical natural areas defined or identified by the Maine Beginning with Habitat Program, Maine Department of Indian Pushers and Wildlife, Maine Department of Conservation, Critical Natural Areas Program for the Town of Belgrade, Comprehensible Plan. Project, to the maximum extent possible, will or will not have an adverse impact on.
Will not.
Neighbors will not.
Will not.
Great. I as well. Okay. The board finds that the project does not conform or conforms with all other applicable town of Belgrade ordinances, including but not limited to shoreline zoning, minimal lot size subdivision, multi-family dwelling, manufactured housing and mobile home park, solid waste and recycling, municipal street and road, adult business, supplemental junkyard and auto graveyard, three ordinances. Forgot, they forgot the mass scattering ordinance. Next. Will, does conform or does not conform with other.
Does conform.
George?
Does conform.
Great. Conforms. I as well. Board finds that the project will not or will unreasonably increase the concentration of phosphorus in a great pond, in a great pond. I foresee a condition with approval of this one.
Correct.
Nick? Yeah, we'll know with a condition.
Will not with a condition as well for me.
Okay, George, I heard you.
You know, the condition.
Right, will not. I get into the, I vote that as well. The board finds that the project will not or will conform to material storage provisions of this ordinance. Material storage.
That has to do with like.
This must have to do with the. Well.
That has to do with like outdoor storage of heavy equipment or.
Yeah.
Or. Inventory or boats or whatever.
Okay, the board finds the project will not or will conform with material storage.
Confirm or is it non-applicable on can't have those that stored.
Formed because it's all indoors.
George, you said will. Greg? I will vote as well. The board finds that the applicant has or does not have sufficient title right or interest on to take the development. Applicant has submitted a deed which shows that they have title right and interest. Board finds that the applicant does or does not provide for safe and adequate parking. Really don't have parking, but I guess they park at each unit. Safe parking, yeah, I would say does. Okay, George?
Adequate, yeah.
I will vote that. Okay. Board finds that the project will not or will conform with all applicable provisions of this ordinance including but not limited to development standards for specific activities.
I think that will be another will with conditions.
Yeah, will.
Yes, will. Will with condition. Frank?
Will with conditions.
I vote that as well. Okay, therefore, the town of Belgrade planning board approves subject to the following conditions. The applicant, the application of. Is this an application of fieldstone land consultants or is it the application of all purpose storage?
All purpose storage is the applicant.
Well, it is.
But. Chuck did it and his firm are the representatives.
Need a little help here. Therefore, the town of Belgrade planning board approves subject to the following conditions, the application of all purpose storage to develop and use the property as described in the review criteria findings above. Storage, storage expansion. I need to read the standard conditions of approval or.
Might be to Chuck's benefit as well as the Chuck's benefit.
I'm reading the standard conditions of approval. There will also be some conditions of approval that the board will place on us as additional standards, conditions, but the standard conditions, if construction has not been substantially started within twelve months of board approval, this approval and a subsequent permit from the Belgrade code enforcement officer or Melon Boyd, to reference Article four and section four of the ordinance. The board approval of this project is described above, as described above, is limited to that described in the application and depicted in the accompanying plan and other application submissions. Except to the extent that the board has expressly indicated in this document that certain depictions may be revised by the applicant. Without further review and approval by the board, any changes to the application, site plan and other supporting application submissions must receive prior approval by the board, including but not limited to changes in the proposed location of structures, roads, parking, vehicle entrance and exit, wells, subsurface wastewater disposals system, the method of waste disposal, the extent and location of digated areas, material storage, outdoor lighting and signage, and methods with stormwater and phosphorus runoff control. Number one and lesson, and number three. Unless a waiver from a specific ordinance standard has been requested by the applicant in writing and approved by the board, the development or use is required to meet all applicable ordinance standards. This board approval, this is number four, this board approval and its associated permit from the code enforcement officer is transferable to subsequent owners of the property. All subsequent owners are required to comply with the conditions of the project's board approval. Then we have project specific conditions of approval. Anybody want to take a shot at some of these?
Okay, before we do the conditional approval, there were a typo in there at the beginning. It's been changed to thirty six months, got twelve months off.
Edit the amendments that last June. November. Right, that's right.
Okay.
Chuck, did you catch that? It isn't twelve months for substantial start of construction, but thirty six?
Yes, I did, and hopefully I'll be able to get a copy of this once it's complete too, hopefully.
Yeah.
Mary, I think they have Sarah's line made at the end. And the signatory line.
No.
So let's make sure that this is the right version that Mary updated.
What document are you talking about?
I mean, with that.
Oh, okay.
Does that have Peter's name on it? Oh, I hope she did about the older version.
Actually, did. Has my name on it?
So to get back to your question, Rich, about project specific conditions.
Yeah.
Why don't I just read what I put together and then.
You've got, you've got them all legit, put it this way, you're doing more than one.
Yeah, yeah, I am, and why don't I read them and then we can discuss them and then decide how people want to. How they want to proceed. So the first with regard to the highway access permit, and I kind of modified these, this discussion went along tonight. Construction of the proposed development may not start until such time as an amended state highway access permit has been issued by the Maine Department of Transportation and a copy provided to the Belgrade code enforcement officer for inclusion in the plane board's project file or written documentation provided that no such permit is required by DOT.
I hope you're gonna give me a look when you're done.
Yeah, I'll give it to you when you're done. Hopefully you can read it too.
That sounded good to me. Anybody have any objections or your mind on that?
And then with regard to DEP and the stormwater phosphorus management, like similar language, construction of the proposed development may not start until such time as the Maine Department of Environmental Protection has issued a state stormwater management permit and a copy of the permit and the state approves stormwater management plan have been submitted to the Belgrade code enforcement officer.
You know, George, I only have two lines here.
Oh, well, in that case, skip the whole idea.
Those were the only conditions that the board had addressed there.
The only other one possibly, I mean, we have a verbal commitment from Chuck, but that's it in terms of our record, but with regard to the, when we talked about the vegetative screenings only including native trees, whether you want a condition about that.
What's, what's do, it could be as simple as all all trees, trees and vegetation plants shall be native vegetation.
Yeah, the way I wrote it up was the proposed vegetative screen planting shall only include native trees.
Yeah.
You can write C as attached.
Two dollars. Right attached and staple it right there. Okay, now that's good, George, thank you. I got a comment that I would have. Now I'm addressing this to Chuck, I guess, and it applies if you want. I would. Put it this way, I'm not sure if this is even proper, but I would encourage you to. One, it would save Hans a, a possibly looking at enforcement issues. Possibly looking at enforcement issues or whatever, but if you can encourage your clients to plant. Some trees up along the road across from the, where the. Well, the, the house with the woman who Tish Kar, let's give her that. If you can plant some trees up there instead of those shrubs. It would take care of two things perhaps at once, would satisfy a neighbor. Who has some concerns about the project and it may also keep you from dealing with Hans with any kind of enforcement action over the. Past planting that didn't really meet the standards. Like you said, it's, it's a, it's a suggestion, I'm not mandating anything, but it would be nice to have that issue taken care of.
I, I was gonna actually suggest after we've. Voted on the application before us, a, a, a motion to kind of approach it the same way. Asking Hans to work with the applicant to bring the development into compliance with the two conditions of its original two thousand and five approval. Basically, just formally and on the record.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
But we, that's after, after we're done with our current issues. Separated now.
So I will add those three conditions, we'll be voting on. Oh, you got one too.
Just that they provide the contractor information and that he is a contractor in good standing with the town of Belgrade. No outstanding fines or judgments.
Which contractor?
Whoever they use, they provide that information. And that it be a contractor in good standing with no outstanding fines or judgments.
This is the excavation, the report contractor, no, they have to be D E P certified, I assume that's the case.
Yeah, well, we don't know who it is, so, but, but that is, that's the question I had when we met last week. We, that came up and we said, well, it's not in the shoreline zone, but that's not the case anymore, correct?
It hasn't been the case since two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, they have to have a D E P certified contractor under our ordinance, it's not state law, but we put it in the ordinance in the updates in two thousand.
So that should be another fourth condition that. Certified contractor in good standing.
Well, what's that mean?
That doesn't have any unsettled fines or judgments against them, the town of Belgrade.
I, I guess I, I'm asked, my question is, what's the basis in the ordinance for us to require that? I mean, we have to have some basis in the ordinance.
A certified contractor, what does that mean really?
Well, it means that they've gone through and, and the D E P training and, and the, and the continuous training that's required to maintain their certification, state certification. So that's all about soil erosion control. What Hans is talking about is completely different, it's.
It's totally attached, if they try an outstanding fine for violating an erosion control or shoreline zoning violation. That they have to be, come into good standing before they can start work.
Before they're gonna get re-certified or is that worse?
Well, they can be certified, but if they've been fined for violating. A shoreline zoning ordinance, they need to clear that violation prior to working on the site.
Now, is that something, is that something that's come up in, in law or regulation somewhere? Or is that something that you would like to see?
I would like to see this condition to keep people from continuing to do work and continuing to violate without paying a fine.
So if they, they go, if they violate the law, are they, do they get almost certified? They can still be certified?
They can, we can petition D E P to, you know, to look at them, to do a review.
Steve McGee, for example, has lost his certification or some of his staff now. Because they do such a lousy job of soil erosion control. They almost lost their ability to have state contracts for the same reason. But there's a specific law regarding state contracting in that regard, and I'm just trying, I, I applaud and agree with the intent, I just. Questioned whether we got the illegal authority to do it right now without first amending the ordinance.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to do what actually Hans is doing, but I'm not sure that we do have the authority to do that.
Unless you can give us, you know, I mean, if there was a state law, you know, trump the. The ordinance, then maybe yes, but. I mean, is, how does, does the select board have an ordinance or even a policy on this?
This is let board can vote and take court action against an individual or a contractor. But this is something just to cover up from using a contractor in good standing. If there's contractors that have accumulated fines after finding a fine and they don't do anything, the select board chooses not to take court action. Well, then. We're just gonna keep letting people work for it, so.
Yeah, no, I understand the intent and I, I, I don't disagree with the objective, as I said, it's a. If, if we were gonna do something like that, I would want to consult with the town attorney frankly. On, under what conditions can we do it? Do we have the authority to do it currently? And if we don't, and we wanted to do it, what would we need to do to make it happen? I just think it seems like pretty thin ice.
The board would not have that authority. For me, but, but Hans would. Because he's the, he's the importer.
Let's, let's put it this way, if we had clear language that said, the board cannot. Kind of, that, like the contract, the requirement for using a D E P certified contractors that. Contractors that work on projects that. I feel like I'm digging myself a deeper hole here, the contractors that work on projects approved by the planning board have to be contractors in good standing and with regard to. Their liabilities to the town, what financial liabilities, it could even be property taxes, for example, the. But it seems to me we need something in the ordinance, otherwise we're just kind of making up the rules as we go.
Yeah, I mean, you got a certification process, if the, if the contractor did not follow the certification process loses it for some reason at the state. Then they can't be a certi- not a certified contractor and local, right? So they can't really hang their shingle.
Right.
If the state fails to take away the certification. And they're certified, you know, you wouldn't have to pay in the bill and all that, et cetera, you know, we, we, they're certified, so we gotta say, okay, fine, you can work, you can hang your shingle up and do business there. Living on, this time, wanting to do business with that. Contractor. We can say no, right?
Well, that, I'm sorry, that's, that's.
Yeah, I think what Hans is suggesting is not. About just the soil erosion control certification, but goes beyond it, if that contractor that.
Has passed violations.
Has, has.
Result.
Violations of other town ordinances, shoreline zoning among them, on the books unresolved. And or, and or, uh, has agreed to pay a penalty or has been found by a court that I have to pay a penalty, but hadn't done so. You want, what Hans is suggesting, that has to be resolved first, and, and I, I just, it seems to me. We regulate the developer, not the contractor, and it just seems like a reach to me.
Yeah, I agree.
Like I said, I, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable doing anything along those regards without. A fair amount of knowing more, first off, what the legal landscape is like.
I agree.
The intent is correct, but we, we are not, we don't have the hammer.
Yeah, I, I, you know, again, Hans, I, I, you know, I understand where you're coming from, but I, I don't think we have the authority at the moment to do that.
It almost sounds like the, that we, they call it a select board.
Well, or, and, and, you know, it may be that we, if we, I don't know, I have to say what I need to say, I guess. Mumbling at this point.
Yes.
Don't take it personally, I, I, I totally agree with George, I totally agree with you, that'd be nice if we could do that.
I'm comfortable.
Okay, all right. Let us know what he says.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be interested in knowing that.
So anyway, our, our fourth condition is gonna be that the D E P certified contractor name and number be supplied to the Hans before project begins. So we've got that. Four conditions that we attach to this permit. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Considering. With the four. Yeah, the, the four conditions. We're going to approve or deny the project. Positive, affirmative action would be to approve the project. Nay would deny it. I need to fast you, George. We're voting on the approval, oh, yes.
Whatever you're asking.
I thought I woke you up.
Boy, you did, but.
And me too with conditions, so we did approval with conditions and. I got a, a question to Hans, I guess. I kind of answered this fairly quickly, I've got a foot on the. Approval based on findings of fact or whatever that language is and, and I'd actually also like to. Redo the checklist, make a little meter. Can I do this and bring it to you tomorrow morning, or does that have to be done here at this moment?
You individually signed that, so you can bring it tomorrow. Right, the. Permit, I think, everybody's.
Yeah, what I don't want to do is keep you here for twenty minutes, a half an hour afterward, that's why I got a copy here that you can, that you can sign. Yeah, taking five minutes to do this.
So I winded it, I had some others and that became irrelevant.
Oh, I checked.
That's why they're brought down.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, so we have voted to approve the storage building facility. And we, I guess we have minutes, we're gonna deal with those tonight, Sarah, do you want to take charge from here?
So maybe a few words to Chuck though, what he can expect in the way of paperwork coming his way?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna complete the paperwork and my understanding is that Hans will be sending you a copy of the permit.
And the findings.
The conditions, your findings of fact, the permit won't be set until the conditions are satisfied.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions for us, Chuck?
Nope, that sounds good, I anticipate we will send an updated plan set, you know, noting. Any D, the D E, D E P approvals or if needed D O T approvals. On the plan set, you guys sign final copies of plans and. Anything like that or?
No, no, not under this ordinance, if it was a subdivision, we do, and we could have to go to the registry, but in this case. Plans you submitted become part of the project file and the official record. Here at the town office.
Okay, and what was that third condition? Was that the? Oh, that was native plantings, right?
Yeah, that, that would trees.
And then. And the fourth one was the D E P approved certified contractor for the. Groundwork.
Awesome, thank you, I appreciate your time, everyone.
Okay, thank you.
So Rich, before we move on to the minutes. Maybe we should discuss my idea of. Us making a motion regarding the. Really doing no, nothing more other than formalizing and asking Hans and the applicant to work together to resolve the. Planting, the tree plantings along one thirty five. I don't know if people want to consider that or not, but. Or whether it's unnecessary, really unnecessary, and I value Hans' opinion as well.
After we told you no, you probably. And no, but it, it would, I. Kind of go back and I'll say the same thing I said with Chuck on the phone, it would be good if. He would work with you and you with him and. If, hopefully get his client to, to plant some real trees up by the road.
Yeah.
And would take care of a long standing issue that one, again, will. Somewhere to appease the, and I'm not saying this just to appease the neighbors, but I think it's appropriate that. What was being proposed before or required actually gets stopped.
Well, my thoughts were, and I'll discuss it, which I would, on the side, they want to stagger their plans, do offsetting rows. And they can just add a few in between those, what's existing, to fill it in a little bit more.
Yeah, but this time with real trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it, it. I mean, obviously, yes, obviously it'd be an expense, but it would. Bring it into compliance with the two thousand and five approval.
Well, that's loose because it was left to the opinion of the resident.
I meant along with one thirty five. The condition that deals with the planning along with one thirty five. Yeah, no, that other condition, I'm not sure with that then. If, if, if I was to make a motion, this is how I would make it, then people can decide. Planning board asks the code enforcement officer to work with the applicant. To bring the development into compliance with the two conditions of its original, actually, this is, if this is standalone. Work with, what's the name of the company again?
All Purpose Storage.
All Purpose Storage. Bring the existing development into compliance with the two conditions of its original two thousand and five approval under the commercial development.
Well, what were the, I know the one condition was a planting, what was the other condition?
They would have to get with. Ms. Carr, she was the one that they, she had approved or come to an agreement, that was one of the original conditions, right?
Yeah.
She, she let us know that she was the one that.
Where, where did the number thirty trees come from? Condition one. Plant thirty plus or minus trees to be agreed upon by neighbors as stated by. Them at planning board meetings. I, I, I mean, I, I think. If all it needs to be done is plant thirty trees, have them be real trees. You know, make sure they're four feet tall at planting at minimum, then boom.
Yeah, plus or minus could be twenty eight.
Was it, why don't we just say thirty? Basically, you know, I mean.
It is one of the things where, where, whatever. Whatever I was, well, put it this way. Try to meet the intent of the provision here.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's. Well, it would, it would definitely help if, if the two parties work together and meet the intent of what was proposed.
Well, and also, you know, it, it, meet the ordinance.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, it is meeting the ordinance, but I also recognize that that's a pretty wishy washy line there.
Well, the way it was applied, yeah. So are we kind of completely that we beat this horse to death and then no, no more actions needed really? So are we kind of completely that we beat this horse to death and then no no more actions needed really?
So so the.
We'll work together.
Okay.
I see Chuck shaking his head up and down, right Chuck?
Okay, good.
Talk to Hans. Hans is my guy.
Yeah, Hans is your guy.
So we we gotta vote on that, Nick?
No, we don't need to. We're leaving it as it lies. We're leaving it in Hans' good hands.
Okay. Alright, so next I had on business tonight. Is approval of minutes of May fourth and June first.
So then four, then Rachel and Carol.
Yeah. I don't have a copy of the book for June first.
Yeah, no.
Or you get it.
Yeah, I was at the fourth, I believe. Oh, no, I wasn't even at the fourth.
So you cannot do it.
I can't do anything. It's easy. Well, that's when we come back and fishing, Rich.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you heard.
It's an even.
Nine pound tow, nine and a half pound tow. Couple sand, couple other tow.
But not me. Yeah, I know.
Okay, on on the minutes of uh May fourth. We, Mr. Baker, Nick and I. Approve it.
I make a motion. I I make a motion when we approve the minutes as as provided on May fourth.
I will this second.
My second.
Alright, so vote, Nick. Uh Mr. Baker?
Uh yes.
And uh Sarah, I'll also say yes, there's three in favor, no opposed. Um now the minutes of uh June first.
I make a motion approved.
Alright. Thank you. So vote uh Mr. Carr. Baker?
Yes.
Um. Uh Mr. Rosentre, yes, so three yes, and then we have uh three ups upstaining. So uh more to pass means our group. Next item is agenda is the CEO update.
Well, as far as updates, business coming, there's a couple of small changes coming. It seems like everybody's. Stop spending money.
Spent it all during the pandemic, did they?
I think so. Cause all very busy overloaded this time last year and now we've got room to breathe, which is not bad. Um but I would like to know. About multi-use buildings, commercial in Delray. Uh got some buildings in the village that have three or four businesses in them. And they just seem to migrate businesses as they wish. And then there's others that have been denied the opportunity to have more than one business. I went some files and tried to find documentation where there have been approvals for certain businesses, you know, these multi-use buildings. And the the files are empty. There's no, I can't find any documentation that varies in the tax records or anywhere. Specifically. Um Lake Home Realty started off, Mr. Ridlefsky was a building furniture.
Mm-hmm.
Selling furniture.
Mm-hmm.
Sold it. Uh the next occupant used it for an office. He lived in it. So worked on and sold boats from the garage. And now it's a real estate office and a home furnishings sale, which isn't. Goes in line with food use uses, but now there's also a coffee shop there on weekends, which is definitely change of use. So. Yeah. Selling a food item now?
I saw we.
They did. Yes, when they did.
They had to deal with that way to occupy. And we told them they couldn't have a car outside, but they didn't do it in time.
Right, so that it was like uh. Oh, a gas station that, you know, also offered coffee or that kind of thing. I I don't remember all the details, but that was the conclusion. And this pre predates you just barely. Um uh there were multiple meetings here um. With the town manager at the time and as well as the 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 young man that owned the coffee. Yeah. Concern and uh as well as some other business owners down town. So um we had can, so this was in the context of the commercial development review ordinance. And we we had um decided and probably the only records in the minutes uh of of our meetings. On that um as long as uh it was just a. Uh a part of the existing um furnishing business, you know, where the coffee was being offered on the side indoors. Uh it did not trigger the commercial development review ordinance. I think I have that correct.
Alright, so.
And so that should be in in but and just to put that context. There not this has anything to do with the commercial development review ordinance, but the plan, at least the way it was stated to us, was. The uh furnishing store was probably gonna close over time and the whole shop would become a a coffee. Place.
So they're selling pastries. That that part of coffee shop.
I think so.
Okay, and your next thing is, well, the furnishing business is gonna go away, so. You said as long as it is part of the personal business, I don't think whether the furnishing business doesn't open, it's a coffee shop.
Well, it's it's under the ordinance, it's just switching one retail for another retail. And the ordinance is only triggered when there's something that really increases um. The uh absent any kind of major destruction uh in terms of changing use to the current developer review ordinance is only triggered when. Um the uh, well, actually, I don't know that that would be triggered no matter what. It's a food service. Not a retail. Coffee is a consumable. Furniture is not. Well, I I, yeah, I I guess I look at it, I personally wouldn't look at it more generally. The the ordinance focuses on traffic generated uh and things like, does it increase the amount? Kind of uh impermeable surface area and does it um result in a business going from. Something that's fairly benign to something that generates hazardous waste or stores a lot of petroleum or something like that, where there's a legitimate groundwater. Uh threat as as a result of the change in use rather than the finer lines of of uh. Uh you know, it is is consumables versus uh 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 goods. But maybe, you know, DHHS might be more different. Um anyway, that's the what I can tell you about the background of that one.
Okay, I mean, they do have a a mobile permit, and they're they're permitted to sell. The guy that's selling coffee, he's got a state permit, he's he's all good. I was just concerned with because questions have been raised about how many uses can one building have?
Yeah, well, and and uh some more background about that, cause this has come up. In applications under the commercial development review ordinance. Remember, a lot of those things down there grandfathered, they predate two thousand and one.
That's what I'm trying to.
Those structures uh and and um the uh. So it's been very limited, at least in my time on the board. I'm grading me no more than I do about this, but um uh the uh. Um the last one was uh the Marine Storage Building. The cement block building that um.
Tiger head.
Yeah, Adam Gardner was the applicant.
Yeah, yeah.
And um and so right now it's all boat storage and he wanted to create two. Uh additional retail. There's nothing under the ordinance, the commercial development ordinance per se that would prevent that. What what was the block, uh what was the roadblock was the minimum lot size ordinance because. Then you're cre- creating uh three uses and then so you had to have three times the lot area and. And 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 they didn't have it. And this is, this is, this is, this is the crux of the issue that went to the state Supreme Court. Uh the right side marine, same same issue um uh each time you add a use. Uh you uh have to have that many more times, the lot size, road drainage. Uh shore drainage in 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 right side space and and that went to the state Supreme Court and.
Well, once that building was like involved in Alan's.
Uh it was a movie theater.
Well, wasn't that the prior carriage before it fell down, Carriage House?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, right, there was, used to be a beautiful carriage, well, it was a carriage house originally, I guess, or at least I went by.
So going back then using applying that to the Lake Home. Coffee shop doesn't need to have the minimum lot size.
Uh that was our judgment at the time, and it didn't require um. I they had a surprising large, to me, surprising large lot and and parking. Um the um, do you have, do you have, this is really important for you to look at if you haven't. Nobody's provided to you is this uh the Supreme Court decision regarding right side and the lane. Because it it's an issue that keeps coming up and and we kind of stumbled with it each time because it's it's not an easy issue. Um but uh it came up a second time with the proposal from Adam Gardner.
Well, I've got another business downtown that has multiple since in their time started bakery. They have no cooking. Facility business now, that's a totally different change of use. They wanna add baking for third-party sales on site. So they wanna become baking distributor, I don't know how you classify.
The uh.
Starting with state licensure, but as a town, the neighbors are gonna say, hey, how come now they're baking? And you're selling it. You know, over there across the town, somewhere else.
Is there gonna be retail?
There'll be retail at another location, not in town.
Yeah, this is basically wholesale.
Oh, so yeah, okay.
And they've got four other businesses under the same.
So that's a change of business.
What's that headed in this structure? What what is there now?
I'd rather not say public record because it hasn't. They haven't applied here yet.
Okay, well, the only ordinance that. We have that the town had, ordinance that the town has that apply, could potentially apply. Is the commercial development review ordinance and the minimum lot size ordinance. I mean, we don't.
But the minimum lot size, I mean, you you're applying that to one entity, the Marina. But you didn't, that's not being applied to the.
Well, it it depends, see, how this comes to play is. Is you may recall when we went through the um. Um commercial development review ordinance uh findings of fact, we have to make a finding that. The development proposal before us meets all other town ordinances. And in those two cases, we could not find legally find that it met the minimum lot size ordinance. And hence the uh commercial development review ordinance in one case was denied. Uh by the planning board and then subsequently worked its way through the courts. In the other case, uh Adam Gardner dropped the application. Um after consulting his attorney um. The uh, uh but if something doesn't have to come to the commercial, to us, under the commercial development review ordinance. You know, that's it, you know, it's either grandfathered or.
So we're, I mean, that's where it's fuzzy, because in a commercial property. Now you're saying that they add another use, even another person running, using this. It's gotta meet the minimum lot size. Just say, look, go back to Lake Home, there's an example, you got your real estate, you got your furnitures. Now you got guy number three selling coffee, that's a third business entity, but not applying to the minimum lot size ordinance, so.
It's kind of like an accessory to what's there, uh that's not really a third, cause.
Yeah.
You know, anybody can sell coffee.
But in that example, if somebody decided they were gonna build another little structure there to. Um or a bakery building, that's. Yeah, then that's a whole different kettle of fish, cause then the um then the minimum rock size ordinance comes into play.
So. Again, say you already wanna go back to now Adam Gardner, he's got a boat storage place, let's just say he wants to open up the color refishing business there. Third-party contractor, you'd have to meet minimum lot size ordinance for that. It's an associated business.
An associated business.
Follows bowling balls in there, well, it used to be a bowling alley.
But the building stays the same size, right?
Yeah, just all internal. So you want, you know, I'm assuming he wanted a building permit just to subdivide within the building compounds.
And that's uh, I I saw it down there, it's that building which has had uh the building you're talking about is where. Kind of put this boat now.
Yes.
And he he does, he does both during, right? That's all it's being done. And then Adam, Adam wanted to come in and. Who was, I think, and talked about a adding a uh increase in the size of the building move that. That's the reason.
Yeah, no, he was gonna turn turn it into um a add to retail units.
But but he was also.
Therefore, creating three uses.
Yeah, and then he was also going to bring out uh the entranceway, a little roof.
Yeah.
Alright, and and we got into the discussion that, well, that it it can't add on that building at all because. It didn't have enough, uh you know, you've already complied to the uh the the size, you know, twenty percent coverage. You know, it already reached that point, so.
I I I didn't remember that.
Well, I remember that.
Yeah, no, I I just don't remember.
Yes, and and I thought that was the reason.
Yeah.
We you already had the twenty percent uh uh you know, limitation, then you add on a little roof there, you know. Six by four footprint, you you exceed the twenty percent and that we can't do it.
Yeah.
There was some reason for them not doing that.
Yeah, the the killer was the minimum lot size.
A prop business, cause that's tagging with the boat business, or even not a full apparel.
Raincoat, boots. I mean, where do you draw the line? Read across the street, you say retail and retail, coffee and all furniture. There's a difference in coffee, you know, something drink and a chair.
See, if um like not, you know, clothing versus. Uh engine repair or boat repair or something like that, you know, that's an easier line to draw in in that. You know, once retail. You know, one's retail, one's service.
What's a voting accessory then?
I, you know, you know, that's it.
You sell trailer tires.
Yeah, you take uh up at the restaurant out there and uh uh. By cookie lumber, we had cookie bread run up there for years and it got changed over to uh. Uh wholesale uh or the manufacturer uh 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 marijuana. And that was a change of use. But the town let it go by. You know, I never could understand that, you know, you go you go from retail to manufacturer. That's a change of use, that's why I kind of look.
Well, I mean, we, because we don't have zoning, that's why the town didn't have a jurisdiction.
Why?
Because that's just a single use going to another use, we don't have a town that has no ordinance and why is that?
Well, I thought they. I thought they had to apply for a permit to do business. A a new type of business.
To to the town?
Yeah, they had to come in, find a plan, do uh get a new permit.
No.
Because, you know.
Only if it triggers the commercial development review ordinance, which it did, that didn't do.
And see, I'm getting neighbor versus neighbor in the village saying, they're trying to do this and there's not a wow, they're not permitted to do this. And that person is not allowed to do that. I did find a permit for the seven lakes in for that barn thing to use for retail. That was approved in the playing war years ago. But that's the only piece of paper I found that has a business. How permanent for any village.
Yeah, well, and and those two um. Applications that I mentioned, I mean, we got some of the same kind of blowback, you know, that basically the inconsistency of the town. And how it's applied its ordinances to Belgrade Lakes Village, um you know. I mean, I, which agent people are talking about, nobody ever knows, but um the uh. Um you know, it's all a little bit of a uh fair amount of smoke, but the um. Um but uh you know, I I have no doubt there has been some inconsistency over the years um. And um and uh you know, um but. You know, the uh um because so many of those. Buildings and uses are grandfathered, at least under the commercial development review ordinance, and because we don't have zoning. So that if you change one use to another use, even though it doesn't trigger that, the commercial development. You want it, we, the town has no jurisdiction, it it is grandfathering.
Yeah, if I didn't ask the right person about Rilevsky making furniture, I I wouldn't know.
Well, there used to be a wine shop in that too.
Yeah, yeah, that was thrown in the mix too. Yeah, so.
There's no record, it's all.
Is it?
Well, I I mean, what jurisdiction does a town in Belgrade have, I mean, maybe alcohol sales or something there, but um. Um. One retail to another, I I don't, I've never heard, I don't, I'm not familiar with any ordinance in the town that. I mean, certainly not this ward, but even the select ward. Liquor license, about it, all I can think of.
One retail to another, let's go back to the marina, he can sell trailer parts and trailer tires, what can he sell? Wine bottles or. Shoes or. Books. Well, it's retail.
Yeah, but they were creating three. And it triggered the commercial development review ordinance.
Well, triggered three or was it, it was two or?
No, no, the proposed development triggered the commercial development review ordinance, so we had to take into account whether the minimum lot size ordinance was. Being complied with as well. Otherwise, I mean, this ward doesn't even administer the minimum lot size ordinance, you do.
So what exactly triggers the commercial review order in your business?
I'm sorry.
What what exactly triggers the commercial review ordinance? Does it have to be new business or that the building is changed?
I tend to use like the retail, retail, if you change to retail, always.
But as long as it as is because the building is single use. And you go from one business to another, it's one single use, you're good, isn't it?
So assuming there's no construction involved.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying, right? When would the commercial development review ordinance be triggered?
That's right.
Um. The um well, one would be if you converted a residential to a commercial use.
Okay.
So that explain, for example, that was the basis of the house next door to the Sunset Grill. Uh having to come here, um apparently the business never got off the ground, but they were gonna sell antiques and stuff from there.
Okay.
That was a residence prior to that, so that's one uh scenario um. A change of use of an existing non-residential use in whole and apart to another non-residential use. So that that would be another. Um. Those really are it where there's no construction or or the establishment of something, you know, a new non-residential use. You know, because there's that category of establishing a new non-residential use like gravel pits, mining. Cemeteries, golf courses, solar facilities, et cetera, cell communication towers. Um.
We just trigger another one. Mining. You call about, thought it was a somebody violating their permit for their gravel pit. Turns out it was private property. Private excavation. Where does the town stand on that?
What what do you mean by that?
The one on Deco Road?
Yeah, no, I mean, what do you mean by private operation?
It was a private parcel. The residential lot, was to dig up so we can put a house in there later. What they put up.
Oh, the next to.
Haven't had no jurisdiction. He can dig all he wants.
Yeah, I can dig the china.
As long as it's on his, yeah, it's on his, yeah.
I mean, in the past, the 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 gravel, the owner of the gravel pit was the one doing the did the clearing of uh trees and and. And stuff, that's why.
All that.
And and now. Here's here is a critical point, though, if they're gonna be selling that topsoil. Then they probably cross the line into mining. If they if they are are removing enough material.
Generally, it's all personal use, so.
He wants to. He's trying to just. Throw put his lawn in there with that.
The house.
Yeah, then.
I mean, he's gotta take the dirt somewhere to make.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
I've never had any restrictions, but I mean, as far as um, I mean, I've been in business twenty seven years. And I was never told I couldn't estimate. Um I can only estimate so much.
Right, right, doesn't apply to the red element of residence. Well, I I did, we did the same thing, we we stockpiled the the topsoil or we're legit with built and then we reused it.
Alright. So then if we are building single use. And we had change it and change it and change it. From one use to another, it's no problem.
My thing is in the village, you got a lot of buildings that are being used for several things.
Right.
You know, some of them are three separate, you know, one building, three separate businesses. And they don't meet minimum lot sizes. They've been there, well. Again, I'm glad you brought up that building because it's been there already, buildings been there, then that lots been multiple businesses. But I guess that building has been one business and that's what differentiates it. Right? So to create another business within that confines.
Then you got two.
So if they propose two new, so you you got three. So if that building sold, let's just say a realtor bought it. And the realtor. Was a married couple, only got divorced, well, they both wanna do real estate. And they have two real estate companies in that one building.
Oh my god.
His and hers.
My guess is they got bigger problems in the town of Belgrade, but.
I I need to know, because then what if the insurance company wants to come in, just the minimal lot size. Overrule, it's still the same use within the same building. They just put up more walls inside.
To remove that.
Yeah, and by so doing, they're creating an additional, one more use than was there before.
That's your same retail argument, it's the same. Same business.
Maybe I not understand what you're, what scenario you're playing out here.
I'll tell you, the coffee shop there, I think, is seasonal, is not year round, isn't it?
The weekend, I don't know.
So we can stay.
Yeah.
So that. Would that, will we get, will we get business found as a whole? Whole business?
Why not? It's a business. They're doing commerce.
I'm gonna have to think that, sit down and think of all this.
I mean, in my, I I think I'm recalling that whole discussion with Anthony Wilson, who was town manager at the time and. And the gentleman who wanted to make coffee and and uh and the other couple of business people. From down in the village that were all part of that discussion directly, aren't they?
Yeah, it was like an accessory business.
He was originally gonna do coffee in the night of.
Yeah.
Yeah. Tell me you go inside here's. But we told him, go inside, you know, it's there, uh it was for him with a lot of money, a big investor. And he he was apprehensive of doing that. But he came up with a business plan, obviously, and spent the money and come down there.
Now I tell you that. All uh feeling out what is the right thing in terms of the ordinance following that rule. Um we gotta think. Out of the box too, in the sense that. All these little businesses move the economy in town.
One important uh thing I forgot the uh left out with regard to, well, I mentioned in the case of um. Brightside Marina, the marina, not the boat. Pair of shop across the street um. Uh town attorney was involved in that because they sued the town and that and that went all the way to the state supreme court. Which upheld town's position on on it creating multiple uses and and therefore being more shorefront. And um and maybe lots of. With regard to Adam Gardner's proposal to um add two more uses to the uh. You know, uh boat storage building, um in that case. Uh we got a little confused and we actually had to get a town attorney, we could, we went back to the town attorney to get um. Uh advice on that and and. That was the advice that you were given reaffirm, you know, this is just like that state state supreme court decision on on number of uses.
Oh, I'm box on red side, I thought it's.
They, yeah, yeah, you will. That's a, um but um.
Um and sorry to keep doing this.
If you can't find it, I think I have it at home.
I'll find it, I I know, I found the file, I just.
But um not that it's the easiest thing to read, but um I I'm sure it'll come up again. I'd be surprised, I mean, it's come up twice already.
All right, so that's my report is, I'm getting a lot of, I guess it's seasonal, they buy all the. Now they're all gearing up for their business and they all wanna try a little something different. The point fingers of who's doing what, that's not allowed.
Okay, I have a question, Dan, and 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 going in town there, right inside, you know, the uh. Sell storage color there, you put a uh season this is on, how'd that then work out?
Silence.
Uh?
Been silenced.
Okay.
Nothing, he's probably got other projects in other places that he's focused on.
Silence is golden.
Uh?
Silence is golden, oh.
There's no tire tracks in there, nobody's using it, I keep an eye on it. Um the erosion controls going in place, if we'd survived the big heavy rains. Flying colors, there was colored water running off of all these other lots, but not that one. So they did a good job, I mean.
So you got yourself a little bit, Nick? Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, I got a three o'clock start in the morning, make it.
Alright, sorry, Nick.
No, that's okay.
Alright.
So about that work, not me, but.
Alright, Nick.
I'm good.
Yes, this is um. Mr. Surgeon. Uh Mr. Baker was a seal. Oh, okay, yes. Oh, okay, um um before I finish the the roll call, um. For next week, we're adding the agenda because we have a new. A new ordinance that passed and it was approved by the town um. To so we select the chair and advice chair for the board. Then we added this next week.
Okay, yeah, that was the email sent thing, right?
Yeah, Mary Vogel sent it, it's the copy of the approved ordinance, so um you probably should review that because it. Talks about absentee and all that kind of stuff.
So, Mr. uh Seal, are we adjourned, yes?
Next week, meeting.
No, no, this meeting.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Alexander, and I will, yes, so we adjourn.